Hello, good evening. We have a quorum, it is Wednesday, September 2017, September 27th, 2017. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, notices hereby given that the Bolton Planning Board will hold a continuation of public hearing on Wednesday, September 27th, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Board of Selectmen Room of the Town Hall, 663 Main Street, Bolton, Mass., to hear and act upon the application of Two Rock Development, LLC, 205 School Street, Framingham, Mass. The application is for the farmland and open space plan, residential development, phosphorid plan, for 649 Main Street, property identified on Bolton's assessor's map two as parcel 12, located in Bolton's residential zoning district. The proposed development consists of a five-lot subdivision. And contemporaneously, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, notices hereby given that the Bolton Planning Board will hold a continuation of public hearing on Wednesday, September 27th, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Board of Selectmen Room of the Town Hall, 663 Main Street, Bolton, Mass., to hear and act upon the application of Two Rock Development, LLC, 205 School Street, Framingham, Mass. The application is for a common driveway special permit for 649 Main Street, property identified on Bolton's assessor's map 2.0 as parcel 12, located in Bolton's residential zoning district. The proposed development consists of a five-lot subdivision.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Paul Alpin, represent the applicants. Can I assume that the board members have seen the red line changes?
Yep.
And rather than going through all the red line changes, do you just want to go over those things, your questions about, or do you want to go over each of the red lines?
I don't think we need to, unless somebody has an objection, go over each of them. For me, big picture, and correct me, Erica, if I'm missing anything, but I think it was, we need a little bit more time to have conversation with CONCOM about the deeding of the open space, and we had made a request, I guess, to consider sidewalks. On the latter point, I see the suggestions that you guys make, I think that's very generous, very appreciative. We ran our own numbers, just as a kind of gut check, at kind of the same time you guys were flipping this to us. I think the numbers make all the sense in the world, but just to give you guys a little bit of color, we looked at a couple of different permutations consistent with what we talked about in the last hearing, from your land down to 626, kind of get a feeling for that distance, from your land to Town Hall, get a feeling for that distance, just as two kind of ideas, when we're trying to figure out what the dollar amount of a voluntary contribution would look like. And then we looked at cost per linear foot. On my most conservative, to I guess the town's favor, figure, I think it was $12,000, and that was a most conservative way of looking at it. You guys have proposed 10, I thought that was super. But from my perspective, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the CONCOM discussion?
Sure.
And how we think about how to make that nice and easy?
So, I did speak to Rebecca Longwell, who's our Conservation Administrator. Unfortunately, they haven't had a quorum, they're sort of lacking members at present, so in order for them to sort of weigh in on this, they need to take a vote. The Chair of the Commission did weigh in and say that, however, in talking with Rebecca and talking with John Law, our administrator, we feel that it's safe to, at least right in the decision, that the town will take ownership of it, and then at the point when the Commission can weigh in, you know, more than likely, if they're going to vote yes, it'll go to Conservation.
So it's a general placeholder, a specific, in the interest of moving this thing along?
It's a little safe town, Bolton.
Do you want to put a footnote or something in there saying that?
We can.
Just because, so that, so we all remember what it is when we're reading this a year from now, that, you know, maybe, you know, preferably the custody control, the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, I mean, I could just take a written and put something, yeah, preferably, in there.
Good. I just, I just think it's good to have those permanent reminders.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any thoughts, questions?
No, I, in general, the red line is taken up to wording, and we want to just review them and make, put them in our permanent template.
I guess the only question is, is the financing for handling engineering going either or?
It should go, either common or driveway.
Common, not the phosphorid.
Right.
So, just has to take it out of the phosphorid, and then, I have no issues.
And the other question we had is, to whom do we provide the $10,000?
Who do you reference in the document?
Yeah, it's a blank space for who we make the donation to.
The donation will be to the town of Bolton, and that will be transferred into our, what we call our Thессuring Mobility Fund, which is used towards developing, well, eventually will be used towards developing sidewalks in town.
Just be, just general, to Bolton.
Yeah.
All right.
And what word is mobility, you know, would try to allocate those funds, or is it Selectmen?
We haven't gone to that one, but I think it's going to be, yeah, a group discussion probably between Board of Selectmen, not Mobility, but Public Safety Committee, and then, any one.
Okay. Folks in the audience, have any last questions, your comments, or thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, Martha Remington. Map 4D, Lot 17, here in town. I was just wondering how the PNF is coming along, that was brought up a couple meetings ago, the project notification form.
Do you need a Mass Historic project notification form?
Well, she brought it up to ask, I think that's more of like, you know, separate with the owner. What is in here is that in the 24 months that this agreement lasts, that there'll be no changes to it, but I don't think that we have, in this document, the right to ask for preservation, you know, long, in perpetuity.
But it has permitting, doesn't it, from the state for the wetlands? Maybe it was brought?
Oh, is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, in a Conservation Commission.
The wetlands is a, is a local permit.
So that's not a state permit. Anything in the state-registered historic district that requires state permitting or funding, in this case, it wouldn't be funding.
I think you had questioned whether or not NOI.
It has to be brought into the construction permit.
Oh, actually, and I did get clarification, I kind of did some research, and I, so the NITD's Construction General Permit, which is a federal permit, but it's under the general permit, does not comply as a federal permit, per se, that would trigger Mass Historic Commission or other state permits, that when they say when a federal permit's triggered. So, if, if you're within the Mass Historic District, and you have a federal permit, like an Army Corps permit, or something in addition, that's not under a general permit, then you would probably trigger to do a PNF or something like that, but I don't think that's the case here. Do you mind if I verify that with Mass Historic?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I thought that.
That was a same, yeah, we did the same.
You had called Mass Historic, and the.
I thought it was Mr. Roy that was going to research that, no offense.
I think he was going to follow up on who he had talked to.
Oh, okay.
He had called them, but he couldn't remember who exactly he had spoken to.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would definitely, feel free to absolutely call them and confirm it, but my understanding is the NITD's Construction General Permit, which they'll need, while it's a federal permit, it's under the general permit, so it's not a specific federal permit that would trigger Mass Historic Commission.
What about EPA?
Well, that, so it is an EPA permit. It's the NITD's Natural Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit under the Construction General Permit, and it's a notice of intent that you file with EPA for any disturbance over an acre, but it's under the EPA general construction permit. So, my understanding is that because it's under the general permit, it's not a specific federal permit, it doesn't trigger this. But I can, I can write all these acronyms down if you want.
And someone had mentioned the vernal pools?
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the vernal pools are located much further away from the site, and they're well outside that 100-foot buffer, any of the disturbances, because Greg had, had, was pointing to it, and it, the vernal pools are, are far enough away that they're not going to even be, the limit of work is going to be well outside the 100 feet.
And are they all certified now, or is there?
I think there's only one that's certified.
And wasn't discussed that there would be?
And then there's a couple potential, there's a couple potential, and then there's only one that's certified.
And sorry, again, a lot of this was discussion from the Conservation Commission hearing, and in that order of conditions, we've agreed to pursue certifying the other potential vernal pool.
Okay.
They have a timeframe and everything.
Because usually how Mass Historical gets contacted is through EPA, or Department of Environmental.
D, I think it would be DEP, usually it's DEP.
Right, the state.
Yeah, not necessarily EPA, but it could have been triggered by a federal permit as well, but I think you're under a general permit, so it shouldn't be triggered.
Correct. Well. I'll try and verify that.
And if you need some of those acronyms, I can write them down, I know there are a lot to remember if you don't.
It would be nice to know with whom Mr. Roy spoke. I know they have a list of like 40 employees there at Mass Historical, but it probably was the NRHD National Register person.
I'm not sure.
Bessie Freeburg, or.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll let Erica know when I find out. Thank you.
Other thoughts or questions? And continue the motion.
We'll move that we approve the.
We'll close the hearing.
You didn't do nothing besides second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I apologize, I wasn't totally listening, did you close both hearings or just one?
Close the hearing.
Close the hearings, that's.
Yeah, silence, yeah. Okay, we have a motion on the two special permits, then. Or we want to wait for the final, final version to be? I think we could do it subject to Erica making the cleanups that we talked about here. Okay. I move that we approve the phosphorid special permit and common driveway special permit for 649 Main Street, subject to the final cleanup of the items we've talked about tonight. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, guys. Thank you. Thank you very much. We should, we'll see more of you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If you want, get a copy of the preservation restriction information that the town planners sent out.
Yeah.
I know that that would kick in after the construction, after this had been totally developed, right?
Well, that's something that the owner should agree on, right?
Right, well, now that you've closed the hearings, I guess there won't be much leverage for that, but we really are hoping that if, by chance, the owners decided in a few years after they lived there that they wanted to sell it to someone else, it's really to protect it in perpetuity, not that we don't think that the present owners will keep it in good shape.
I think it'd be up to the owner, in my opinion.
Well, yes.
Yeah.
But what will be the incentive? I know, I know he loved his previous envoys, so that will be the incentive.
Thank you.
I think with William and John looking down, I mean, that's enough incentive.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, so much for that, Erica. I don't, I don't think that the conversation's over yet.
Well, I certainly would hope so, because, I mean, we don't want to slow the progress down, but we don't want that house and that barn to be jeopardized after we're gone.
Yeah, I mean, but, I don't know that, I mean, in my opinion, it's right to leverage the whole, you know, have him put this, if he wants to do it out of the, you know, for, for the house, I just feel like it's a separate thing. I don't know what other people feel.
Well, it is, but since it's being protected by the phosphorid development, and once that is closed, right, and the town has accepted the private way or whatever.
When 24 months are up, he can tear it down. I gotta take a little bit of a leap of faith, though. I mean, he could have come here and done a traditional subdivision, but did a phosphorid because he wanted to preserve that. His mind might change, or he might sell the property and the new owners.
Well, and it did change, because initially, he was thinking they'd have to sacrifice the barn, right?
Yeah. And he went through a lot of work to.
Right.
To not have to do that, so. So it is, you're right, the leverage is gone, and it is a leap of faith, but I think it's the right decision on this one.
Martha, has the Historic Commission, have they been able to pursue other properties in town with that, with that?
Well, this preservation restriction supposedly on the Schultz Farm that International did when they bought that, Sawyer Road, and of course, there's the one in the Town Hall because of the slate roof. There's another one on 390, I mean, they're not unknown, and there's one that would come in, so there are like three or four.
Sorry, do you want to sign off? Mike, please, I didn't give it to you. Sorry. Where can you use the other one? So, those restrictions are similar, would it sound like to, if we had, when we voted previously on the historic district type of restrictions, right?
No, a local historic district simply is a, a group that reviews permits and things to make sure that the exteriors of an historic district aren't cheapened by work that doesn't try and keep them in the spirit of the historic district. It's, it's not that strict. I mean, the thing is, the preservation restriction goes with the deed, so that when the house is sold, the people realize that, at the very least, they should review with the Historical Commission that is here, not the local historic district, but the whole one, just review so that we can advise them to help them do what they want to do, but keep it looking as historic as possible for the benefit of the town. It's only exterior.
They had the opportunity, I think I'm right about this, to do a different design subdivision, take down the building, and not go through us. So you've got to play it out a little bit.
Yeah, but it still would have been in the, in the National Register District, and they still would have been advised that it wouldn't be the best thing to do for the town, you know?
But not required.
Our lifetime is a blink in the lifetime of this town.
But we certainly take that risk. If we say you must put this preservation, we're going to stick hard to it. They have options, and if they took that option, we have no leverage. So it's, it's a leap of faith, and it's a negotiation, and I hope I'm right about it.
And really, now with the way that this is worked out, it's not like there's all this land in the back where they can develop from them, they're kind of like boxed in to.
I think it's a great subdivision, I think.
So, so wetlands, kind of. So they, somebody would have to want to tear down the house and start over, it's not like all of a sudden, there's going to be a new development.
That's a good point.
Right. The thing is, they also could have chosen to keep that 30-plus acres intact, and it would be even worth more in another 20 years or.
That's, but that's their choice, not ours, you know? So it's, it's a little bit of game theory, but I, I got a good feeling from those guys. I don't always. Well, we're five minutes late for our next hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 87, Public Shade Tree Law, Section 3, Cutting of Public Shade Trees, Hearing, Damages, in Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15, C, Scenic Road, and Section 250-24 of the Bolton Zoning Bylaws, Scenic Roads, the Town of Bolton Tree Warden and Planning Board will hold a continuation of a joint public hearing regarding the application of Robert Pace, regarding the proposed removal of a 24-inch diameter white oak required to construct a driveway for property located at 75 Century Mill Road, Lot 2, identified by assessor's map 3.D. as parcel 8, lots 1 and 2. Public hearing will be held at Town Hall, 663 Main Street, Bolton, Mass., on Wednesday, September 27th, 2017, at 7:45. We're talking here, correct me if I'm wrong, Erica, about Lot 1. We talked about Lot 2 last time. So Lot 1 is the one 24-inch diameter tree in the right-of-way, right at the end of the driveway, at Mr. Pace's suggestion, and he's not coming today, I take it?
He is not, no, he had mentioned that at the last, the last meeting.
At his suggestion, I drove my truck into the lot, I backed all the way in, and then I drove out slowly and kind of took a look at sightlines. I could go either way. I'm not a big fan of cutting down trees that we don't really need to cut down. He, in his opinion, and he's the one who's going to pay the bill, who would be paying a lot less if he didn't have to take it down, says that for sightline reasons, in his opinion, it should come down. I, I would yield a little bit to anybody who has strong opinions in the room. I didn't see it as a terrible safety hazard. I think as you're approaching out, there was one tree, a very large diameter tree, kind of right behind it, that might not have been, I guess, in the right-of-way, that was taken down, and that, to me, gives you a lot of sightlines as you're looking towards Route 85.
Just one clarification, I believe it's Lot 2, not Lot 1.
It's Lot 2, not Lot 1, okay.
Just a clarification.
Folks on board, feel free to.
I did, I did the same experiment on my way home tonight, back into the driveway.
Dark or light?
It's still light out. Well, which is, which is worse, because it, actually, there's a little bit of a bend further down, and at night, you could see the headlights coming, whereas, you don't have that, that true. I didn't think the tree he wants to take down was an issue. There are two or three further down along the road that actually are obscuring traffic more.
Towards Andy's.
No, toward, no, toward, um.
Towards 85.
Toward 85, yeah.
Which is to the left, to the, so, sitting here, yeah, so, the tree he's looking at is kind of right here.
So it's not on the spot, okay.
But there's some trees, you know, further down over here, that I thought obscured the, the sightlines much more.
Are they in the public right-of-way, are they on?
Probably.
They're in the public right-of-way.
Yeah.
You know what he's talking about?
That's what he's talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if he was saying he wanted to take those down, then I'd probably say, that makes more sense, the, this white oak, I mean, when you're sitting in your car, it's, it's there, you know, you've got a clear line of sight to the, to the road that, that way, so I don't see it as a sight issue.
So I did the same thing, but I wonder.
You've got a bunch of strawberries here, it's a live experiment, you know?
I wondered if there was a lot of snow, and there was snowbanks pushed up on either side, and you were backed up a little bit, because I agree, you could pull forward, and you were clear of the view, but if you were backed up a little bit, maybe, I could see it was obscuring.
Check, check.
I could go either way.
I didn't back in, but I drove by.
Because there were four cars already backed in.
It was like, this is covered.
It would have been four, you know, we couldn't do that.
That's a good point.
I do not actually back in. I guess I would, you know, I'm always, the opinion, while I honestly don't want to lose a tree, the sight distances are important, you know, the tree will continue to get bigger, and if someone's willing to take it down now, and it could potentially inhibit, then I would be okay with that, I don't have a strong.
With it going down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a strong opinion either way, but.
Had a big dead limb on it, right?
Yes.
That one, yeah. Interested in your opinion, if you want to introduce yourself, sir?
Mark Hayes, the Bolton Tree Warden. My concern is that, once again, we're losing a, you know, a larger tree, a condenser group. Did it, just the majority of the board members backed in, looked. If you did some routine brush management further up to that corner that Mark was making comment of, that you can visually see between the trees and, and get around that, that blind corner. The distance from the tree to the edge of the road, and the distance of your car, there's plenty of that, there's plenty of chances for you to see around and through that tree.
What is the, do you know approximately what the distance is between the tree and the?
If you had a standard car, say that it's eight feet from the front bumper to the windshield, you're going to be behind that tree, you're going to be.
Yeah.
From the lot side of the tree, and being able to see if anybody's coming. It's not like the tree is right in your complete blind spot, you can see to the, towards 85 clearly.
Healthy tree?
Healthy, it has a dead leader on it. My other concerns are that, what, however they construct the driveway, and the impact on the root zone, and, you know, failures.
So it becomes unhealthy.
It becomes unhealthy down the road. But at this point, my opinion is that I would like to see that tree stay.
Can the dri, I mean, it looks like, and again, this tree's not located on this plan, unfortunately, but.
It's outside of the work zone.
For what, Bob Hayes has told me, he said, either way, whether the board.
Yeah, he seemed fine either way.
So I was going to say, you could shift, it looks like the driveway could shift a little bit, what's the diameter of the tree?
It's 24.
Driveway's not in the way of the tree.
Well, no, but I was.
The roots?
Oh, yeah, because he, what that, what he was saying, I was going to say, you could shift a little bit to the other way, but I just don't know how far, because you have two other 24-inch oaks over here.
Well, and you've got, this, this drops off kind of on both sides. Yeah, you didn't have roots to play with this driveway.
No.
In terms of.
It's got it.
It is, or it's not, you know?
There's a lot of other driveways that are a lot, that have a lot more blind spots going out of.
The Duane Henry one was, I mean, that was tough.
Well, I think it was, that was five feet diameter, so I mean, that is a huge.
Couldn't you see it? That was tough.
But I, I would like to see that tree stay.
I would tend to.
Excuse me, Martha Remington, map 4D, Lot 7.
You have an address, Martha.
That's my address, according to the hearings, that's my address. I, I agree with the tree warden, I just think that this is another big tree that's going to go, and they probably won't even grind a stump once it's cut, so, now that I've found the place, I'm happy.
Any other thoughts, guys? I'm inclined to have it.
I move that we, that we.
Yeah, we. Yeah, blank. Keep, sure.
I was also, I was going to say, keep it anyway, so.
Also, the town doesn't have any sightline rules as far as a single driveway goes, so there's not, there's nothing that we can hang our hat on as far as saying it's a sightline problem.
Okay.
It's common driveways where it starts to kick in, if I'm not mistaken.
Who brought it up, him? The developer? The developer, yeah, because he said he didn't.
It's in the right-of-way, so he has to have a hearing, but he, he had two, was, I got to take it down, so I don't want to, but he, he kind of thought it was a safety issue.
I think he would prefer to take it down, but.
He didn't feel strong.
Yeah.
That was my.
It gives him a clean slate to work from.
This makes it a little. That's what I was going, it's probably convenient to put the driveway.
Exactly.
So it's going to be a little more difficult to put the driveway.
Well, I will move that we do not allow the 24-inch white oak.
Martha, before you do that, can you close the hearing for me?
Okay, I move to close.
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now, I move that we do not allow the 24-inch white oak on, which is Lot 1, not 2?
Lot 2.
To be removed.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Save the tree today.
Yeah.
All the druids in town are really happy.
Really?
Yeah. You know, tree worship.
Look at that, couldn't be more on time.
Wow, it shouldn't ever happen.
Recommendations for Bolton Master Plan Update and Long Range Plan.
Oh, yes.
Hello.
Hi.
You have been busy at work.
I, I have, and I.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, that's a really nice start of me. And actually, I also want to say thank you for, you know, not just all the general stuff, letting me talk, of course, that's, that's really very cathartic, but when I came out of last meeting, I said, you know, I can't believe how hard these guys work, and I was pretty impressed with what you do, so I'm not trying to blow smoke, but the nailing is, it sinks to what I found when I reviewed the master plan. And, and if I want to get to the good news first, if I were to look at this very critically, and I'm a really hard marker, I'd say the Planning Board has done a darn good job of following the master plan, whether or not you've read it, somehow you have, I mean, I, I don't want to presume you haven't, but you have the instincts, I mean, the cottage overlay district, the mixed-use district, everything that you're doing is very consistent with what the master plan is. Now, I have, not, not only have I been doing research, and frankly, part of the reason Now, I have, not only have I been doing research, and frankly, part of the reason why I do is, I wanted to reassure Erica that I'm not crazy. I really wanted to get up to speed on the town, and how the town operates, and there's a lot I still have yet to mark. But it also gave me an opportunity to talk to a lot of people in town. Former selectmen, former planning board members, maybe future people who might be in these positions, and even, you know, and it's given me an opportunity to get a better sense of what's going on. So if I were to say, overall, what I'd like to do, I mean, there are two ways you may decide to go on master planning. One is, you could try to just fulfill the legal requirements of what the planning board is supposed to do, and actually, you're pretty far along the road, you just need to document it. Now, there are other committees, though, and this is so, the impression I had, other committees that are still working out the goals and objectives that were assigned to them. Like, there's a lot going on with roads and safety, you know, or 117. There's, so, that's one observation I make, that it really goes beyond this board. I know how hard you work, I think that actually it'd be a fun group to work with, I'd like to help if I could, you know, to help move it along in any way I can, and actually, it'd be fun to work with you. But I also have been impressed with, if we're also to say, just a couple of observations. The master plan was done in 2005, it was approved in 2007 by the planning board. There were different economic conditions then, and some of the concepts, especially around affordable housing, fees and lieu, lots of stuff like that, I was trying to figure out, why are we struggling with these things, you know, and are we ever going to make our, you know, exemption, you know, and all that? And, and there may be different reasons for why we want the restrictions and the decisions that you make every day when you're dealing with subdivisions, and to keep them in place. And actually, Erica filled me in on some of the potential uses for the fees and lieu that are starting to accumulate, and I think they're great ideas, and by the way, they're very consistent with the master plan. So, but, but I think it's revisitation. Now, the master plan also says, let's educate town residents. It specifies specifically affordable housing, which is complicated enough. But in reality, and finding this, as I, you know, it certainly is true with me, certainly true with a lot of other people I know. I, by the way, moved to Bolton from New York City, and so I had no clue about how town government works.
How long ago?
18 years ago.
Okay.
And I really enjoyed it, I really have. But if I were to think about, um...
I will.
Let's see, where did I go? And it, I mean, there, I would say there are, so there are some things that need to be, oh, I would also say that the resident population, and I'm kind of a perfect example, it's a har, it's hard to understand how town government works. And there's a lot people need to be educated on, to get actively engaged, so that we can end up with a representative electorate that consistently votes on different things. And so, so with respect to that goal of educating the populace, I mean, affordable housing is one issue. You might want to revisit what we need to do, what, what you want to do with affordable housing. But beyond that, there is this, I think, you know, it'd be nice to see you publish the results of what you've been doing, help educate people like me, you know, I took a long time to figure it out, that you're doing exactly what you should be doing, and then there are reasons why you might not be. There's a bunch of other, in my recommendation, there's a bunch of areas where I'm not sure if you've technically passed the bylaws that are specifically required. But day in, day out, you're just, you know, you're looking at all these issues, you really hope you're doing, I couldn't find fault with it. So the question is, and, and there's one other initiative that's going on, and you might want to consider. It's, I think it's a pretty easy task to fulfill the minimal requirements insofar as it impacts the planning board. When it comes to the other committees, frankly, I think there's a fair amount of coordination involved. I would be happy to do more of the work, I think a lot of it has been done. One committee, or one board and committee that I would recommend you consider coordinating with, especially those of you who are on capital planning, I think there are two of you, the advisory board is doing a lot of great work on financial planning. And for some reason, and the research that I did, talking to people, no one really understands why the original master plan didn't have financial planning in it. And, and so, my background is one that I don't understand how people can have, you know, a governing document that doesn't take into account, okay, what do we think is going to happen down the road, and, hey, how much does it cost? It's hard, hard to get your minds around, I mean, it's something, but at least to come up with a template. And so, and there have been, so I think there was a meeting last week with advisory and capital planning and the board of selectmen, about, hey, you know, maybe our objectives should be scaled against consistency with the master plan. I thought, yes, you know, you know. So people are thinking about it. Now, the other issue I'd like to mention is that a lot of other towns will take master plans and kind of put them on the shelf, frankly. And actually, there's an element in this master plan where you get the sense that maybe it was drafted by a consultant. I don't think we, you need to hire a consultant, because I think you've got all the brain power, and all the work's done, you're doing everything really great. If I were to spend money on anything, or consider spending money on anything, where you dig down deep and try to get down to some of the inner issues, there's a lot of confusion around basic issues that drive decisions that are being made on a day-to-day basis, frankly, that are somewhat controversial, when you roll it out to the general electorate, like, what really are the financial and tax implications of purchasing open space? It's going to be a hot topic this year. You know, what happens if, take, take a hypothetical 55-acre parcel and compare it to one across the street that's 160 acres? You know, would we be in a position to try to address the impact of that 160-acre parcel? And have we planned for it, both from a financial perspective, a relationship perspective, et cetera? And so, when I go beyond thinking about, you know, conformance at the middle, at the minimum level with respect to legal requirements, I think, gee, wouldn't it be nice to free you all up to think about the bigger issues? And maybe, for example, Erica has a wonderful network, she knows what's going on with other towns. Maybe other towns didn't just, maybe they planned in a way that we haven't been planning. Maybe there's a way we could, you know, kind of capitalize on what they've been doing. We could investigate, is it possible to have a friendly 40B? Are there angel developers out there? I'm supposedly going to be meeting with somebody, who somebody thinks is an angel developer a week from now. So I'll test the proposition. I know it's rare, but something like, is there something we can do to think of that? And personally, I have a personal interest in stuff like that. I'd like to see if, you know, hey, you know, I might consider co-investing, something like that. Anyway, so, so all is well with the world in terms of what you're doing, and frankly, I'm kind of impressed with how much you care. I felt guilty after last meeting, because I realized, what the heck have I been doing? And that's one of the reasons why I was inspired to put so much time and effort into this. And I assure you, I won't take it personally, if you say, you know, it's a little scary, I don't know what to do with it. I mean, I think you and I have kind of gone through it, and we kind of, you know, discussed it in ways that maybe I could be helpful. But I reassure you, I'm not trying to box in in any way, I'm not trying to be demanding. I really am trying to figure out, you know, what's my role as a Bolton citizen, and is there any way I can pay Bolton back?
I don't get that feeling at all.
About what?
About a scared reaction. I'll read your notes, I get the opposite feeling. I think that, social media can be a dangerous thing, if you get too caught up in it. This town, and many towns that are similar to it in shape and size, are based on, like you said, volunteer government, small-town government.
Thank you.
And it's a very funny animal, but I think there are many folks, there are many who are different, but there are many folks who don't realize the time and effort that pure volunteers, taxpayers, folks that work 50, 60 hours a week, are putting into it, just because it's their town, it's their house, they're here long-term, they want to do the best for it. You said a bunch of things I thought were pretty cool. Outreach and education to the public as to their role, and it's a good thing, their role as to how they can shape the town. All we do is recommend things, and deal with the clerical, deal with the administrative. They're the ones who vote, the populace is the ones who vote on all of the policies and procedures. I've seen some comments on Facebook talking about who's approving these residential subdivisions. You are, you guys are. And if you want to change that, this room is empty today.
Yeah.
Empty. Shut up. I've got two very young kids, I'd like to be home too, but you've got to pull up your sleeves.
It's tough.
I mean, show up, call us.
So I love that you're here, you're going to talk to us.
If I might add to that, because I can, so, here's my guilt complex. I haven't shown up for a lot of, I've tried, and then I've been...
You're rolling up your sleeves now.
No, yeah, I am, but I've been frustrated, and also, I am adverse to contentiousness, in spite of the fact that I'm a lawyer, believe it or not, I prefer to resolve a conflict. And so, every town meeting seems to be very contentious. And I'm trying to do my part, and actually, have been discussing with colleagues, as I get to know them.
Stay off of Facebook.
I will say, I've heard that.
Is it the video is on?
So, yeah, I read through all your summary, and I think, I think, I think it's exactly kind of the direction we're heading. I think what you were talking about, you know, sharing more information, I feel like there is tons of information out there, and maybe we can write up another report. But unfortunately, like Dave was saying, a lot of people just want to read 140 characters, and the reason, and a lot of the contention is, is from people not understanding how much work has gone into it, and, you know, how we got to a certain point.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, even if we, I mean, I think that's good, we should, you know, we do have televised meetings, and we're talking about having informational sessions for the cottage overlay. Just, it's tough to get people who aren't involved in it to, you know, if we give them a 30-page report of how we got to some point, they're not going to read it.
So, so, a couple thoughts, because I've been thinking about that too, and I don't want to overwhelm anybody, but, okay, so I've read several thousand pages worth of documentation, so I understand that. And so, one thing is, this working copy is 14 pages, so if there's a committee constituted that is like-minded and wants to get to work, you can use this, skim through a lot, I think, frankly, I, maybe I'm naive, but I think we could meet the minimal requirements. There's another aspect, actually, of this, I hate to say it, that is stimulating, and that these other issues, I kind of get excited about it, if we have an opportunity, because you guys know so much, and actually, I'm so excited about all the stuff I've recently learned, and started coming up with ideas of how could we get population engaged. That's not your responsibility, but I do think ultimately, you're really serious about implementation, and best way to be growing in the same direction is to get the electorate behind you. I've got some ideas, and I started sprinkling those ideas with people who I know are active in the community. And I'm thinking of, gee, it would be great to get people involved on what I call an omnipartisan basis. So you see stuff in here, and I also had kind of like a flip out today, I said, you know what, some of these recommendations are better, you know, I'm, you know, I'm learning, I'm still learning things like the open meeting wall and all that, and I have to do a double take, but I, there's ways to get around them. And so, the question is, you know, also is to impose some discipline on myself about how many, how many ideas you come up with, I, Erica, get the sense you're kind of the same way, you know, it's like, you come up with so many ideas, and, you know, maybe there's a lot to implement. At least, I assume that to be the case with myself, and that could be something where if you got people engaged and said, hey, by the way, here are the issues we want your opinions on, and consistent with the requirements of the open meeting wall, how do we marshal those, so that we can feed them in to a process that informs and educates the electorate, while it also helps you do your job? So surveying is really critical. I mean, the old master plan, by the way, everybody's concerned about tax moderation.
Yeah.
And you're, and I understand your parents are in that group, I'm in that group, everything else. Lot of confusion about the implications, I believe, of...
I would say that differently if I were you. We're all, we're all in that group.
We're all in that group.
The elderly who can't stay here, the aging, those kids leave, and they say, oh my God, I'm out of here right away.
Right.
But then that spirals out, creates a problem for everybody else.
It's true, but you know, by the way, I'm a single person, never had kids, you know, look at, but you know what, I think I want to stay here. You know, I...
Thank you.
So, right, so, whatever, and I might actually want to build a commune, you know, on a 168th or property, but forget it, that's somewhere in the future, anyway.
How about a cottage overlay?
A cottage overlay, no, that's why, Mark spent two hours...
For all your friends, none of whom have kids.
Right.
Your huge heart's kid.
Except, we'll let Mark's kid, no, 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 it's all right. Okay, but anyway, so, so the thing is, you know, lots of good feelings about this. I mean, I couldn't have been happier to say, oh my God, once, you know, once I finally understood it, you know, it's, it's nice to bring good news, and frankly, I just want to have the opportunity to do whatever I can to help. And by the way, Eric, you know, you know Eric's terrific.
Oh, yes.
And so, I'm looking for ways that I could be an aid as opposed to a obstacle. But I think, but there are a couple of decisions you need to make, you know, like, if you decide you want a committee, who would you want on the committee? I don't know, I, you know, I'd be the best chair. I mean, I certainly love to help the committee, but you might want somebody who's a little distant from it, you know, and, so they can own it.
I don't know if that's the case, I think you want somebody who's...
Yeah, I don't think that's...
I think he wants a little...
I think we want you.
Okay, right. No, no, but the other thing is, you lose objectivity when you get invested in something. So I've got, I have gone through an emotional cycle with this whole thing, you know, I'm trying, but, but it's actually been very good.
Well, right, but you haven't been like, you know, we've been on the board for four or five years, and like, we've been going from start to finish on a lot of these things, so we're really like, in love with things we're doing, but you're coming from a separate point of view, you know, a separate point of view, where you're seeing some of the stuff as good or bad, or whatever.
As long as you can remain objective. Sometimes when you get drawn into a project, you can start to lose that, it's just a thought. The other, the other strong recommendation is, I've actually developed a keen appreciation for the work that the advisory board is doing. And, you know, and some are represented here, and others aren't. And, and so, the work, I know you're going to go through an exercise, the capital planning committee, separate public body, is going to go through, you know, a discussion about an upcoming nature of purchase. So there's an exercise, and, and how we roll out this new financial planning module will be very revealing. Capital planning, you know, I'm trying to understand capital planning's role, independent of the advisory board's role, but frankly, given the structure, it seems that it would be great to involve advisory, to the extent we can, and I, and I have been speaking one-on-one, consistent with the requirements of the book of law, with different members of the advisory board, and I sense everybody's in favor of planning, and, and the need to coordination. There's a lot of fascination about what's going on with the master plan. So if we, if, if this was something you want to consider...
That's a good point. That's some area where we're pretty delinquent. We don't coordinate with advisory, I think, as much as we should. And we're, we're kind of joined at the hip, you know, so we should, that's a good point.
Yeah, and it's something you can tell your parents, you know, you say, talk to advisory about this, whatever. Okay, so, so I guess, let me just, actually, I haven't looked at my notes, let me just double-check if I haven't said enough entries or whatever, but key issues, friendly partnerships, lots of confusion about financial impact of some of the, you know, of major purchases. We need to document your successes, you know, and create a roadmap. I believe that, and I can say that as an independent person who has looked at the website, you know, there's a lot of stuff posted on the website, but it took me a long time to kind of understand what the planning board was at this point. And then, understand that there are some contentious issues, obviously, there's still, they were there in 2005, here and right now, hasn't changed. And the other thing, I'd like, absolutely, you guys jumped up to the plate immediately when you said, hey, listen, this is our responsibility. Technically, legally, the master plan is initially vested, its responsibility is initially vested in the, in the planning board, but the plan itself delegates responsibility to the board of selectmen and the advisory board for its implementation. I know that's different from what other towns do.
So say that again, so where, where the author, effectively, we maintain the document, but the implementation is, is more or less on the other two boards, I didn't realize.
If you read the end of it, page 88, you know, whatever, it says, implementation, you'll see it, and it's the end of this excerpt, you'll say, you know, I tried to put the responsible entities for us, no, not that I'm trying to point the finger at somebody else, but it does suggest that there should be an overall perspective of how do these objectives all fit together? Oh, and, and, yes, and it's, and it's not just, you know, the Public Ways and Safety Committee issues that are outstanding, there are some public health issues which I've done updated, there are a bunch of different committees that have responsibility. And so, if I were to look at municipal, the municipal org chart, myself, from my private sector experience, I would try to figure out, well, who reports to who, and who's sector experience, I would try to figure out, well, who reports to who and who's responsible for overall objectives and not. And frankly, I would look at planning board, in spite of the fact that you've grown above and beyond what I think your normal responsibilities are. You're certainly, I think you're drivers of a lot and managers of a lot of important stuff in this town. I wouldn't think that planning board, I mean, the board of selectmen are elected, you know, and, you know, and so I'm trying to get my mind around that, but I think we've got a bunch of really effective committees. You don't have to throw it all to the board of selectmen because they've got so much on their plate right now, there's so much stuff going on. We've got a really capable advisory board, a lot of interesting stuff going on there and I think this would be a great opportunity to facilitate coordination. One other thing I might mention, I am a member of the law committee. So it facilitates me to speak one-on-one with many people on other boards. And to the extent that doesn't enhance, I mean, I want to be transparent, you know, I want to, I'm really there to understand issues. It might help, I mean, I might be able to help with coordination.
Communications, every single form, I think. Keep me in, keep us in the loop, if you would, with respect, oh, all of us in the loop with respect to your conversations with the so-called as an angel developer.
Okay.
In my real job.
Okay.
I probably financed 3,040 B units over the past.
Oh, really?
And I will talk, I did yesterday, I will talk with many of my clients.
Uh huh.
Who deal with different towns, I try to get their perspective when they're dealing with towns.
Uh huh.
As to friendly town permits, ZVA interactions with the comprehensive permit. How does the town work and what towns do you work in and what towns work well and which you top? And I will speak many times about some of the parcels we have in town.
Uh huh.
I look at it and say, in just my own personal opinion, I think you agree with me, a single for rent 40B project could alleviate all of our concerns and get us from four going down to 12.
Right, everybody agrees.
But I have those conversations all the, all the time with high net worth firms, with institutional, all across the board, and they all say, oh, Bolton's a nightmare. I've never touched it.
I've heard that too.
It's a bad perception, we got to fix it, because development isn't bad. Bad development is bad.
Right, right.
Good development is good, solves a ton of problems.
Nightmare, excuse me, sorry. Nightmare how?
Carving was.
Carving?
And it's.
I think it's historic.
It's historic.
It's historic.
It is, I'm going to make sure I don't get in trouble. I spoke with somebody.
Well, it is the infrastructure too, I mean, because you don't have.
I mean, that's what I thought it was, I thought it was the infrastructure.
I mean, that's, that's a huge.
And the traffic. And, I mean, there's.
Totally.
I mean, there's definitely.
But the first issue that everybody harps on is, oh my God, there's Baz Lincoln.
Yeah.
But it, it happens all the time. It's the sense that I get. But then they'll throw around, we'll talk about specific parcels, parcels that have been vacant parcels for decades. And they will refer to their interactions with those owners as the legacy owners. So I'll say to myself, okay, this goes back 30 years, he hasn't owned that chunk of land for a long time, she owns it now.
Right.
So it could be, my only point is, I have those conversations all the time, I get nowhere.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd love to hear, hear your feedback and say, I probably shouldn't have led the witness, I should have checked in after I said that.
Yeah.
To see if the interaction was the same, but I'd be very curious.
I was just going to say the same thing, because we always talk about affordable and the cottage overlay is more to do with tax revenue versus.
For everybody.
For everybody versus affordable.
Right.
But, and we've had people here that were thinking that the cottage overlay was more going to be about affordable, but it's not necessarily about that.
Right, right.
And you're talking about friendly 40B, I mean, the most friendly 40Bs, if we create a zone where we can have some type of apartment complex, you know, garden-style condos, where we can.
They're not designated as affordable, but normal people can afford them.
Exactly, where we, where we can go from 3% to 10% in one development.
Correct. Now, from what I understand, it's extraordinarily expensive for any developer to consider that a proposition because of no, no town water.
Right.
And that's why.
I should have said that to be fair. That always comes up as answer number two. And I should have said that, I totally spaced on that.
Yeah, we understand that limitation and we've had minor discussions about sewer, you know, you know, their long-term planning doesn't.
But I'm going to tell you, sewer, an out-of-state, I'll be careful again, a developer from, from out-of-state came to a town near ours that has similar lack of public infrastructure, sewer, fire ponds, wells.
Bugs for him?
No comment.
Yeah.
And, and they have had, they made it work, but it's in the model of a, okay, let me have to spend on this.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. But you're right, it's, it's, it can be a.
And now they have their SHI, 10%, they have their 10% SHI.
They do now.
They do now?
They do now.
Got it.
But, yeah, I mean, and people say, oh, I don't want that, you know, here, but if you don't, if you don't make it a friendly 40B by, you know, funneling into what you want.
Then it can be much.
A 40B can be anywhere. Our, you know, our most prime realist, you know, business real estate, the Kane property could become a 40B and we lose.
And it still can be a fine project, it can solve a lot of problems, or it can be a total disaster.
Right.
But you have no control over it whatsoever and all. We've got a really cool, this is one of the coolest things and we have pretty much nothing to do with it. Design review board was an awesome invention.
Yes.
I don't know who.
From the master plan.
That's a master plan.
It was from the master plan, I didn't realize that.
Yeah. Daniel saw it.
I guess.
I mean, that should alleviate, and you harped on this, that should alleviate a ton of the concerns of folks.
This is all about the aesthetics and a lot about how it's going to fit into the town and that's what.
And we use it.
And we're supposed to, I mean, that's kind of what we're supposed to look at.
But technically, remember, 40B doesn't get renewed by design review board.
My point, because.
If we need it, it's known.
If we create a zone, that's a.
No, I agree.
That would be a friendly.
It's like a project, it could.
Totally, totally.
Also 40B wouldn't, a friendly 40B we could.
Yeah.
At least consult with them. And, I know like, you know, these people, you know, they'll say, you know, I have battles on Facebook with people, but, you know, people, they, they always.
You, you just enjoy it.
I do enjoy it and I start it a lot of times, but, but, um, people, they always go back to, you know, like, kind of scare tactics and what it is, but I think, you know, you know, given the information and, you know, talking about the apartment complex, they're saying, if we don't do this, then you're going to end up with something worse, you know.
Yeah.
People don't, they don't make that, they don't make that connection.
So I think that goes back to just one of your points, that if we come up with a, I don't want to say a program, but a, a way to outline it how we want to and we educate the populace of what we want, then they would have an idea of what to expect and they may not be as prohibitive of saying, oh, no, we don't want that, we don't want that.
To that point, I think that's a super point. The biggest education, I think, is to say, we are the stewards and the administrators. These are our rules, we're just suggesting stuff that we spend a lot of time thinking about it, but it's the town's town.
It's a town's town, but, you know, I'll say, you know, as being one of guilty as charged, there are reasons why people don't sit through the three-hour meetings and go to all the town. And frankly, I don't have the ability to organize people who agree, like I do, to get on, on the agenda for a special town meeting and to force a conclusion. So I don't know how that hap, I kind of know how that could happen, but anyway, so as my lawyer background informs me, I get inspired by democracy and institutions that represent all the people. And the only way we can get there is really getting people, in my case, it was getting over my fear of not knowing what the heck I was voting on. Now I have, I, due to the kindness of many people who've spoken with me and starting with Mark, two hours after the last meeting, and the 20 hours I spent with different people who, one way or another, were willing to give time to help me understand the context of the stuff that I was reading, I feel like I'm a little better, you know, at getting to railroad and there's still this huge mountain to climb. But I'm hoping that there's some way in combination with what I do on law committee, which I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to refashion based on my prior experience in the private sector and other work. By the way, in college, I aced an urban planning course, but I never fallen off on it, but it, you know, and that's urban planning, but if there's, this stuff is fun and it, and it's obvious that with all, you know, with the hours and, and maybe the complaints you have to field all the time, you seem to enjoy it and so.
Magicism.
You have to enjoy contention.
Okay, enjoy, well, okay, and I want to resolve it, so you can generate it or resolve it.
So one thing on getting off the word, I'm sorry if I'm.
No, no.
Like, I've always had an issue with like minutes, not necessarily our board, but I would love to go to the meeting schedule and just click on the meeting and have the minutes pop up, but the minutes are just not online, they're not easy to get.
Yeah, it's true.
And why you Monday?
Huh?
Right? The new update.
The website's getting updated.
So, so, I mean, I want to be able to, you know, I don't know, like, how long minutes take, maybe, you know, give the person a week or so, but I would love to be able to see, you know, the conservation committee, click on their, click on that meeting and just, I want to have an easier way for all meetings to get to minutes, I don't feel like that.
Arms are decent, right?
No, I mean, but how do you get to them? You know, they're on there sometimes, they're very outdated, I mean, nothing against you, I'm just.
No, no, I, I understand, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Meeting minutes, keeping up to date on meeting minutes, it's a challenge.
Because I try to keep up with the conservation committee, I try to keep up with.
We lag. And they're in-depth with the minutes.
Right, and that's.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think the webpage, you should be able to go to the list of meetings, click
on it, have a link to the video, have a link to the meeting minutes, and that would be able to get the word out. And also maybe the planning board should have like a quarterly report. We have an annual report, which gets filed. We have an annual report which gets filed, but it never really goes anywhere besides some cabinet in town hall.
We don't, I, I don't spend enough time on that. I mean, you're dealing with the business and you're dealing with the bylaws and the bigger picture.
Her annual report is awesome and I think we're the only five who ever see it, you know.
Well, the, the other thing is, I mean, just another, I mean, if you're trying to get information out there, I mean, we have the Bolton Independent, I mean, there's certain things.
Can we mail, can we mail the annual report?
I mean, people read that, people look at that.
That's a good question, I don't know, I don't know how it gets distributed.
It doesn't.
It's actually easy. We have it.
We should mail the annual.
Which is done to work.
Other than that, at least.
But other groups put, put something in.
Can, can we give it an?
In the.
That's what I'm saying, like.
That's a good point, I don't, I don't know. I mean, that's something that should be.
I mean, advise. Posted and get on the subscription list, so I get notice of agendas.
It's always posted, I know it gets.
And shoot an email out when it gets.
But I don't know whether or not they actually.
Yeah, but that's like.
But what of the ward?
Well, we, I mean. But the independent, they don't have, they don't have to do that, you know, it's a private business.
The independent is interested in covering planning board and I actually approached.
Well, are they really?
Yeah, I actually just saying they're covering the planning.
They don't cover the planning board at all, right?
I know, but I, I might do that.
Well, I think you should because.
No, that would be crazy.
Nothing against the selectmen, but reading the articles about, you know, you know, you know, a sign, there's just some, like, we're dealing with such big issues and.
Cindy, forgive me, I know, I mean, Cindy, I have been thinking, I mean, she's really true.
Like, I'm just thinking, we're dealing with all these, the cottage overlay, it's not covered one bit.
It's very.
And I've talked to Ken Cleveland and.
Cindy, Cindy Bremer, do you know Cindy?
Yeah.
Oh, they, you.
I've talked to the reporters, I'm like, why don't you guys cover the planning board?
They have different responsibilities, so they cover their own meetings, there's different styles and there's also, and frankly, Cindy Bremer is very open, like I expressed to her an interest in trying to educate the public and I would like to do it independent of letters to the editor, for example, because one of the objectives, which I haven't gone over with you, because it's really more advisory board, if it gets to the advisory board, is, you know, how do we engage people? I've got a bunch of these ideas to bounce off of an omnipartisan committee and it includes, you know, how do we get people educated and engaged? And one of them is, let's have objective information, not biased information, let's have the facts and have fora in order to be able to make sure people understand the context and let them go.
Yeah. C-SPAN instead of CNN.
Right, exactly.
And just letting them know what is going on.
What is going on.
And I, yeah, I think that's the biggest.
And so one other, you know, so there are a bunch of ideas, like as soon as a house closes, somebody goes and says hi, let me be your mentor if you have any questions.
I was going to say, I feel like, in the traditional sense of partisan, Democrat, Republican, that doesn't exist here. What does exist in town is develop or not develop. There's, that's like the party, the develop party or the don't develop party. And it just, like, really, it's in the middle where we should be. I feel like I'm in the middle, you know, smartly develop, you know, everything we talk about is somewhere in the middle, you know, we have to make sacrifices on both ends and meet in the middle. But the two parties really are develop, don't develop and like, when you get on social media, it's like these extremes of, you know, we don't want to be Route 9 and we want to be 1700s, there's somewhere in the middle. If you want a modern school and you want infrastructure, you have to, you know, make sacrifices here and there. So that's kind of what a supply and board we try to do.
And, and, only because of my private experience, which is corporate finance as well as corporate law, I'm used to negotiating those positions, you know, that where you have a, well, it's a buyer and a seller, you know, maybe there's an agreement to settle, but you always have to compromise, you always have to, and the question is, how do, but, but part of that is, you've got to get to know, you've got to develop trust, you've got to have one of those relationships, so.
Well, we also want to have, I think the other thing to get back is, you know, we want to have a plan that we can start to bring both parties together based off of the open space plan or the town plan that we all agree on and how it should move forward.
Because the open space recreation plan is subject to the master plan.
Yeah.
So the master plan trumps it.
Yeah, so we, so we want a master plan that's up to date, that reflects how the town wants to move forward, including all of these.
The more information out there is the closer people come to the middle. If there's no information, you get extreme'd out to develop and not develop, whereas if you get the information, hey, we need to do this for this, and this is why all these pieces connected, people will get brought into the, you know, that compromise in the middle. So I think we're all talking the same.
Right, so, one way or another, you know, if I can help in any way, oh, so let me just make sure, oh, and also, feedback, you know, I can, I really did want certification, you guys didn't think I was crazy, I'm not, I can, I can have my doctor, the test, talk to. But then also, Ken, if, if, I'm delighted that you had the time to read it, thank you. When you confer on this, and I've also given Erica a little bit of background too, and have additional questions, delighted to entertain them, but let me know what you think about this coordination idea. And I did start to reach out to the advisory board, one-on-one, you know, because it takes a long time, there's one person I haven't been able to reach. You know, I do need a little bit of heft, you know, someone else to, you know, get, get the process going. I'm concerned about their time, you know, they're going to get into budget season starting in December, so is the capital planning and, and other committees. So what do you think? And so if we could have an interact, or if I can help you in any way and give you feedback, if you can give me feedback, and I will probably show up at the planning board meetings in what capacity you know.
Thank you for coming in for the first time.
Yeah.
First time.
Second time.
Second time, technically second time. First, first time I was like, why are we doing a first good dialogue?
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Okay, so great?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, and thank you. Thank you, big time. Okay. Should I, oh, actually, is there, once you make a decision, what should I, do I owe you anything? What do you think, what's an action item to make?
I don't know that there's any action items at present, I think there will be obviously in the future. Um, it's how the planning board wants to move forward with updating the master plan.
So ultimately, we have to determine if we, you know, if we want like a committee to open this up and then an outline what the committee will do. I mean, looking at, looking at the way you organize, um, maybe if it's just a more concise, a more concise, like, outline of what a committee would do, I mean, this is...
But, but you know what, that's where I kind of need your feedback, because I don't know, I'm not sure, like, all I did was look at bylaws and seeing what the dates were on the bylaws, and you might want to prioritize them differently. And again, I hate to throw something back to you, but I need guidance, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think, so do you want us to like outline what we think our three to five year plan is? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, or what you want me to do, what you want this committee to do. And this is like, you know, you don't know, I mean, you just met me, you know, or I know some of you a little better, but, you know, you know, I'm still getting to know people in town, still trying to figure out how can I engage people myself, so I want to do a good job for you, if you want to engage me somehow.
Let us think about it, but my sense is, we would like help in this area. We would like to engage you and any others who are interested in it. Speaking personally, let me digest that master plan a little bit more. I digested your summary, I want to digest it again.
Don't, don't get acid reflux.
No, no, and kind of strategize what's most important. Revisiting the master plan, implementing the master plan, communicating that which we've been implementing, communicating that which we haven't been implementing as kind of a look in the mirror, what can we do a little bit better? It's probably all of that stuff to, to a degree. I think I'm hearing from you as an outsider looking in, spending a bunch of time reading and digesting, learning, that the master plan makes a lot of sense, kind of condenses down a few topics that were important to folks 10 years ago and probably are pretty important today still, yes or no?
Uh, they're outdated, but there are reasons for keeping them in place.
So are the priorities in the master plan outdated?
Um, the emphasis is a little outdated, I think you'd find.
I think also she was talking about...
But I, but I think you've got a handle on it. Only after, it's 14 pages, if you get a chance to read it, and maybe it's worth a follow-on discussion after it. Uh, and then I guess the only other thing is, is the master plan limiting in terms of what we should be doing? Because we should be tapping into all this capable expertise and think strategically.
So my point number one is not necessarily in the end zone. Is the master plan in its current state, being drafted 12 years ago and voted on by the planning board 10 years ago, is that in its most optimal form for 2017 today? The answer is not necessarily yes.
No, not necessarily.
It's go through it and say, yeah, that's a great idea.
Right.
We're still doing it, we still should be doing it, we should be communicating that we're doing it. But these other four things, that was before the bubble popped, that, what's the point?
And then there's like 10 more that we need to add in.
Because we never thought about, it was never important, but, oh my God, we've got a school that's blooming, or whatever the case may be.
But by the way, I think you're legally compliant, you know, you're really close, you know? So if you need to file something, you know, I think you're really close. And planning board is. Other committees, you know, you've got to figure out what to do with 117 and...
But it's helpful, I think it is helpful to have an outside viewer kind of take a look at it.
Have to learn, have to learn on it.
Because I think we do, all of us, and all the committees, kind of get, you know, we get into it. And we also get kind of bogged down on the, this permit application is up, we better cross our Ts and make sure we're seeing everything. Takes a lot of time.
And it's hard to shift gears. You're going from detail to big thinking to detail, and it's hard to go back. But, so one other thing, though, one other consideration you might think about is, so there's been a committee constituted called the Strategic Roads and what is the planning committee? How does that fit into this? Isn't that under master planning also, you know, or do you want to, how do you...
So the Board of Selectmen created it just to, I can say, they, they just had, you know, maybe Mark, you know, Mark's in Board of Selectmen meetings, Mark, but, so they just had one where they reviewed the old plans and kind of came up with some suggestions for safety. But now they're talking about more about the planning for the road over the next 10 years, that's like, do we need, you know, what do we need for traffic lights, what do we need for that type of stuff?
That's specifically for roads.
Roads.
Well, any more so, it's for 117.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
What they do should be consistent with...
Despite what they call it, it is 117.
But, but you are correct.
It should be consistent.
The master plan doesn't really talk about financial stuff much at all.
Yeah.
So how does that, no.
You were in that?
You were in that, that was a different one, okay. And how does that, how does that get implemented, and, you know, how does it all tie together?
Right, the financial planning important, it does reference traffic and 117 and sidewalks and all that stuff. A lot of the same issues that the Strategic Roads and Planning Committee is working on. So the question is, you know, this is again, how, I mean, this, the corporate path, thinking about this, how would I structure this? Like, you know, I'm not savvy with municipal law and how a town's operate, but I see a lot of coordination with that committee too, or having them make sure they get information to you.
So I'm interested in that committee, because, um, there is two kind of distinct groups too for that. There's the group that just wants to get traffic through town, and then this group that are perfectly happy with it backed up so people take another route.
Right, right.
Yeah, but then, they're going to be taking all local roads.
No, no, no.
Throwing the letter out the window every day.
So, so, so that's the most partisan issue, I think, in town is because some people just want it to be dead, are happy with it being deadlocked that more people don't come, and some people, like us, who are interested in businesses actually being able to thrive, have traffic get through town, you know, so it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that committee.
Well, so that's, so contentious issues, and this is what I'd really like to somehow figure out how to do it. I like this concept of having, and I was thinking of, uh, not only crossing the aisle, but making, not just a bipartisan, but an omnipartisan involved in, you know, engagement where, I mean, I've been having some really neat conversations with people one-on-one, and, and if they're away, and it's thought about things that I've never would think about on my own, and from different perspectives. And I believe we can come up and actually start generating, you know, stuff that I've shared, I don't know if you share it with everybody else, and it has something to do that we're chartered, but generating what are key principles that we could probably forge consensus on in order to be able to have a discussion on a more granular basis of what recommendations would flow from them. So do we agree on, can we get people all to agree on, we need to have unbiased information in order to be able to evaluate it? Can we agree that comprehensive planning is important? Can we agree that maybe there's an ombud, you know, I was thinking, gee, maybe we could create an ombuds person role where we have a night facilitated discuss, I, you know...
I think everybody can agree with that, but when it comes to implementation, everybody represents their side, so it's tough.
Yeah, I know.
It's just how it is, everybody has their own interest in, in mind, so.
And I just want to resolve. But anyway, again, I just, I, it's a, it's a good energy here, thank you for everything you've been doing.
Thanks for...
And I'll try to make up for it, and just tell me where you want to go with this.
Okay.
And I'll just keep following agenda items and if master planning comes up again. There might be some action on the advisory board side, you know, make sure that we've got, you know, I've said this and there's been a presentation to the planning board, they're getting their minds around it, so we'll go from there, and I over, I've overshot my time.
I appreciate it.
Okay. What do you do now if you're in the public sector, private sector?
I'm a lawyer still, I mean, I was a general counsel, hated being a senior executive and all that. Uh, so I'm sort of an on-call general counsel now, and, um, I have some clients, and then, um, frankly, I do whatever I feel like. There are times when I go nuts, sorry.
Real estate, corporate, trajectory?
Uh, you know, Panera Bread Company, I was there, CLO, some companies, um, actually been in a foreign industry, so I've had to learn stuff quickly, and that's why I thought, okay, I'll learn municipal law.
Well, go in the municipality.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I'm not there yet, so.
Cool, cool.
But, um, and so, like, like engaging with people, and I really have an aggressive way, you know, so. And I don't know nearly what you guys know, so, something to learn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you, you started it. Okay, take care. I'll, I'll take off, thanks.
Let me very quickly kind of summarize what I did, I did, I did, a lot of red ink, red line, but it didn't change too many big picture items. On what? Uh, it's Article 6 of the cottage overlay. Maybe summarize just big picture what I did, and then big picture, uh, small handful of points that I think are outstanding, and then we can talk about it any day. And all consistent with the most recent conversation that we had here two weeks ago, I guess. So number one, putting back an emphasis on 55 plus, calling it 55 plus and not seniors housing. And I do think that makes it interesting, thank you for that feedback. Allowing for both, and hopefully not making it terribly confusing, but giving, kind of putting flexibility first, and allowing for both 55 plus and non-55 plus, but in both cases, smaller dwelling units that now, after hearing Eileen, now limits it to only one and two beds, keeps our 2,400 square foot maximum. But allowing for 55 plus and non-55 plus, giving that carrot that we always talked about, but now defining it as a four times multiple in terms of zoning relative to 55 plus, and a two times multiple, non-55 plus. So it still gives that incentive for building smaller houses, different houses, uh, houses that, like I said earlier today, normal people can afford. That's it, that's, that's big picture. In terms of items that I think, and anything can still be outstanding, anything that we want to talk about, but big picture items that I think for me are still outstanding and we should talk about more. Do we want to cap townwide? Do we want to say it's kind of a check-in point? All right, we've done this many, is it working? Do we want to amend it and, and recommend more? And I think percentage of overall housing stock is probably the best way to do it, it's probably the simplest way to do it. That's number one.
Right, and we can put a hard limit on, you know, number of units, so we want to allow, not a percentage.
Percentage or hard, you can do it either way.
Yeah, I mean, I would say you put a hard number in there, just...
But that's number one. Number two, um, there is specific language, it might be in one of our bylaws, it's definitely in many other towns' bylaws. If you know of it, great, if not, I can probably help to find it. Talking about what 55 plus is, and what I'm getting at is, is it the owner? Is it the resident? I've seen language before, but I couldn't put my fingertips on any, in terms of you can have your son or daughter who's 37 years old, but they can't go in the school system, let's say they're 12, who's 16 years old. They can't be in the school system, they can live there, they can only live there for three months at a time, whatever that industry standard is.
A lot of times what I'll see is it'll provide for someone to live that's like the caretaker that may not necessarily be...
Whatever that language, all I did was, I threw a simple parenthetical, which is inappropriate for a bylaw, but it gets my point across. Person shall apply to owners as well as residents, meaning no owners less than 55.
So is your intent to have like a definition section where we have what...
Either it's in parenthetical, and we talk in more industry accepted language, or there's a definition, however we want to do it.
I saw you tried to put it in there as a sentence here too, but it would be good to define a little...
I'm talking...
I think it makes sense, definition.
Okay.
Yeah. I think still might have a definition, I'll look.
Number three, right along those lines of having a good definition. Erica had a good definition of what affordable means, it's on, in your copy that says today's version, probably the first one, it doesn't have all the comments in the margin, just to make it clear. The, page two, the only highlighted thing, by households earning 80% or less and the median income relative to the MSA, which includes a town of Bolton, is reported by the US. I think the only thing that definition is missing is, didn't you talk once about 80% of three-member households versus four-member households?
You can pick whatever you want.
But I think we need to pick one. He didn't define it.
Because we had similar reference in the...
He and Lou.
In the He and Lou...
Yeah.
Now is there?
That was 70, 70% four.
70% four?
Yeah. I just remember we went over back and forth.
We should talk about the same one for consistency.
Well, but, but, but it may not, may not necessary, because you're not going to have, whether we...
Oh, that's true, you mean that, not four family, yeah.
Not a four-person household.
It's a talking point, we need to define.
But we, we should have a similar reference, so it's similar, you know.
I think I had one more. Oh, Eric said to me, that lady, who was it? Not a comment. That's a good point. Um, at one point in time, um, should we have something in there that limits the clustering? Should we have something in there that limits...
Not clustering, number of dwellings per unit.
Per building.
Yeah.
Units per building.
I thought we did, I thought we talked about...
I think the way to cover it is how I tried to cover it on page four of that same document, under E, highlighted. But this is like, and I, I know it might feel like ponting to the design review board, but I respect the hell out of them, and I think they can... I think Michelle in a meeting can posture herself well, I think she can stand her ground, and she's very educated, she knows her stuff. So I want to lean on her for stuff like that. Sometimes a cluster of 12 looks awesome, and sometimes it looks absolutely a difference.
Well, we're not, I wasn't saying clustering of units, I was saying a number of dwellings per unit.
Both, I think, are important things to put under her purview. Architectural details and styling of the development question include its review, it meaning the design review board. Of the developments, buildings, including attached design slash detached design slash a combination thereof, layout of the development, setbacks as between buildings and parking areas, dispersment and clustering of buildings within the development, as well as units layouts, their designs, their finishes, lighting, sidewalk.
Maybe we should put dispersing, dispersment and clustering of buildings and dwellings with it.
Do it on the red line, because I don't remember it, but yeah.
But it's the same. I thought this was all the stuff that we're supposed to be taking care of, that we're supposed to be taking... Well, the thing is, like, like, how complicated do you want to make, I think the DRB has... We don't need to repeat every single thing the DRB already says.
But don't we want to be clear in here, but let me say it differently. Michelle really, and I agree with her, wanted to be clear in here that DRB is going to have an intimate involvement. If you've got a suggestion how to illustrate that better than getting into the specifics as to what DRB is going to be looking at, then that's cool, but I want, the reason I wrote that paragraph is to really bang the bell, so.
Well, I was just...
They're going to look at all this stuff.
I was, do we want to set a hard number of dwellings per unit? But, but, but it, maybe somebody can come up with, maybe we come up with the number of six, but somebody has amazing design with eight.
That's why I don't want it.
If DRB thinks it's great, then maybe it is good to have.
Let's say it's 65.
Yeah.
I mean, it might be really cool, five-dimensional.
I mean, so do we want to, uh, you know, do we want to say that units need to be 20 feet apart from each other here?
I wouldn't throw any numbers.
Or leave it up to the committee?
I would throw, I would make it all qualitative, and say they're going to look at this, and they're going to look at that, and they're going to look at the other thing.
I think in terms of the offsets to the building, no, I think that should be qualified because...
About which one?
The offsets to the building, and then the offset to the property line, because I think for a developer to be able to, to at least start engineering something, they're going to have...
Have them come in for a preliminary meeting.
I was saying, I was saying, I think they need some, some guidelines to start.
All the developers in the room, when they come back, fight you guys against that, we'll say it's too restrictive.
Well, they have one, any restrictions, so.
20 feet, 20 buildings is not that restrictive, and I think that if we don't give them some guideline, they could come forward with a plan that we're going to toss out the window, and they're going to be angry because they're going to have to start over again. I need to give them something.
This is from the person who was beating up 649 about keeping space between the buildings.
Yeah, no, I mean, just...
Bushes between... How did that work out? It was a good conversation.
It was a good conversation, but, you know, but they already had some, but by definition, they had some offsets, they had minimums that they had to make anyways.
If we put in numbers and they, and they trip those, then they come in here under the pretext of, I'm looking for 26 waivers. That puts a bad taste in everybody's mouth, puts a conversation...
That gets the leverage, that gives us the leverage to say...
But, I mean, you have, you have...
We have tons of leverage. Well, with the, with the other overlay, the mixed use overlay, how many people have used it?
Well, no, but I did say to you that I think we should have a spacing between the U S.
I disagree with you.
Yeah.
I, I, I definitely feel strongly that we should have setback in, in the distance between buildings, because I do design of stuff and layout all the time, and it's very difficult to go in with no, and most towns don't leave it open. They give you guidelines because they specifically want you to follow them, and when you don't follow them, you ask for the waiver. There's nothing wrong with that.
DRB is architectural and aesthetics, but I think just the setbacks, the setbacks.
And Michelle took already weight in and said that you need the 20 feet, so I think...
She's not a developer.
She's not a developer, no.
She's not going to use this bylaw.
No, true.
She's going to represent those who are going to...
And I also worry that one day Michelle will not be on the design review board.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean...
She's fantastic, but I do worry that at some point she will leave, and we may not have that...
I do think we need a little bit of structure for them.
Yeah, I think this is leaving a lot of, um...
So what would you guys add? Did setbacks on the lot lines and setbacks as between the buildings?
I just add back that one condition that we had in one of the previous drafts.
What was it?
Uh, the interrelationship of buildings, where we, we call up the 20 feet, and then we say all dimensional requirements, you know, to the property line will be in accordance with zoning.
I want to read it, I don't remember it.
Just not here.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. All other dimensional requirements shall be in accordance with 25013, what are those?
Well, for residential, it's, well, for frontage lot, I don't know if you have, for frontage lots, it's 20 feet side rear and a 50 feet front.
Dimensional, so it's dimensional on the lot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I know I corrected, um, yours a little bit on part two, because you were saying 50%, 50%, because that was up to traditional. But I think we need to reorder these actually a little bit to make it flow better. I think C minus, C minus example should be first. I thought about this. So C minus the example should be first, then D, um, and then, then you can have A, but in there, you, you know, I said, you can say not less than two-thirds of the dwelling units, um, or 50% of traditional count, however, to make that more understandable. Do you know what I mean?
Yes. What was the, what were the first few words of your paragraph that I just looked at?
Interrelationship of buildings, the proposed building, that's it.
I can find the old version, just to...
So I think, I think two should be reordered, C minus the example should be first, then B, then A, and then you can have a D with the, with the example.
Sorry, can you say it again?
Yeah, I'm not following you.
Where are you?
On part two, so page two, the part number two, not...
C runs through the math, and that really is kind of a starting place, because whatever you're going to do, you're going to spot.
So do you want this to be, do you want C to be A?
Yeah.
A, and then what was B?
Then B.
So B is fine.
B is B.
Okay, and then A is C.
Because A is kind of a, when you're done doing the math, this is what you come out, it's a conclusion.
C, because it's an example. A doesn't make sense until you read C.
Yeah, 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 I got lazy.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Can I just ask a question? I thought we had, and maybe this was discussed last, last meeting, but was the, you said max one, two units, two bedrooms, I'm sorry? We got rid of the.
Yeah, I totally went to that. Aileen knows her marketplace, and she looked at it and said that it's useless to have threes.
It is.
We have talked before about we allow three, but only a percentage.
Yeah, we said ten percent could be.
But isn't that against the grain of the whole spirit of this thing?
No, but I guess it was to go back to the original comments of providing flexibility, so.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
But if you've got someone saying it's pretty much, I don't know, that's the only reason why I was pushing to leave it in was because of that whole flexibility of it, but.
I think two leads this whole thing into, hey, guys, you're getting the extra density, what you're supposed to be building is, again, things that normal people can afford. And we're talking about kids in the school system, so why are we allowing three? It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to be a reason, other than flexibility.
So I think, I think, I think, I'm sorry, I think you do describe, well, how to, no, I'm on two C. You know, so you take the traditional count, and then it's two X for.
I thought you were thinking way too early there.
I, well, I, I'm like copying to you, I did try to, like, when you say, when you say not less than two-thirds, not less than two-thirds of the dwelling need to be, you know, why don't you just say at least two-thirds? Because you have like kind of very gankery kind of way of describing things. Whereas, perhaps two-fourths with.
Does it say at least?
Just say.
I'd definitely have to tell it a vis a vis, but that's, it makes us say.
Yeah, just like, yeah, dumb it down. Dumb it down for engineers like me, like me who just want to see numbers.
You caught my mouth, mistake. Another one that was highlighted, that I didn't highlight, I think you had highlighted.
Okay.
Page three, number five, about parking.
Okay, yeah.
Did you highlight that? What, what are you talking about?
I just wanted the board to confirm whether or not they like that.
Okay, keep or not keep.
Yeah.
Additional parking in proximity. Should read it out loud, we are on tape. Additional parking in proximity to any clubhouse or other facility serving residents in common or guest parking shall be provided in off-street parking areas, provided that no single accessory parking area shall contain more than six spaces. And all such areas shall be adequately landscaped in front of the town. I think it's cool.
Can I, so what is this getting at?
Don't give you a huge parking lot and don't park on the.
Yeah, don't park on the street.
No, the off-street parking is fine. I'm wondering where the six parking spaces.
Yeah. Most, we talked about, I'll be biased because I finance this one, I'm very proud of it. But we, we talked about Broad Street and Hudson, the big strip, it's like eighteen in a row.
Okay.
And it fits well within that town. Maybe we don't want it, but it, they've got a couple of, they've got parking spaces in front of each garage.
Yeah.
But then they've got a couple of, kind of around the corner, you wouldn't notice it.
For like visitors and stuff like.
For visitors. And it might be, it might be like four, maybe four, five, six, it's no more than that. And it looks cool. And as you drive by on Broad Street, you don't really notice, oh, wow, we got a huge extra parking lot. I think it's good to have that, because you see those in these more clustered developments.
I'm trying to think.
Or if you look at Ridgefield.
I was just going to say that.
They've got, there's, each unit has a garage, and there's parking in front of the garage. And then, in between the buildings, there's like a small, there's like three, three, four, five spaces.
Okay, so you're just saying, you're just saying no more than a cluster of six? So you can sporadic them.
Right. Well, so like Ridgefield does, so this is like, say, four buildings of four units, right? So each has the, for the particular unit, that's the same. But then in between every four buildings, there'll be like four spots.
Four, okay.
So you could force, yeah, I forget what the number, I haven't gone back and counted. So maybe you say number of dwellings divided by four, you can have that many common, I don't know how specific you want to get, but.
I mean, I do think we need to put a number there for how much guest parking you're going to require. You know, based on the number of units they're building.
I think the developer can come in and tell us what they would.
Well, I mean, it's cheap for them not to do any. But how many do we want to.
Well, I'll show them.
They know the sound, yeah, yeah.
I like, I like it, how you heard it.
Yeah, I think this is fine. Now that I've understand what, what this is getting at.
Even six is kind of a big.
I, I agree. Four, five or six.
You might reduce it to four.
We could say it to four.
Yeah. I mean, I think.
Although six, you need to fix it if they do, I don't think they'll do a clubhouse, but if they, well, that's probably not realistic. But I could do a clubhouse. I'm just thinking if they do, you're going to want more. Or Jim.
You'd want a lot more than six, if that was the case. I mean, now you're talking.
Clubhouse would be cool. Let them come, so I'm going totally contrary to my current comment. Let them come in with a waiver on that.
Yeah.
Four, five or six, we want to do a clubhouse, but we need more parking.
We can't waive, we can't provide a waiver unless we say.
I mean, we'll say, say the residential parking, residential visitor parking is max four. Clubhouse or common facility.
I mean, we're not going to be able to think of everything that we come up here.
Just say, wait a minute.
Just say clubhouse.
Going back to the setbacks, if we can't provide a waiver, then we're wed to those numbers.
I, I think we don't want to waive the distance between the minimum dis, like, again, it's all just minimum, I mean, I think the distance from a property.
It's setback from the lot line, it's setback from the road, what else is it?
And then just between buildings.
Is that really it? That's all?
That's it.
You referred to another section. I don't know what that section's supposed to be.
That was just for property offsets, that's what.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think those, that's it.
Twenty feet is from here to the wall.
I understand that. I'm more worried about how many units in a building, what does the building look like?
Well, the.
They're all going to be different. You don't want to narrow yourself.
No, I think that's fine. I think we want to make sure.
I don't know where we are.
We're not dictating that, we're just dictating that you can't have, you can't reach out from one building and touch another building.
Then, then cool. Then, then I'm on, I'm on board.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine with this, this is good.
Kind of like Sugar Road.
Are they, so are they that close? Are they, that's a good point. Are those twenty feet?
For Sugar Road.
I know it's forty feet.
I mean, they look right on top of each other.
I'll vendor and let you know next time.
That would be a great kind of comment.
Yeah.
I mean, all I see is just stacks of buildings. That's, that's not twenty feet. I mean, they're on top of each other.
Oh, man.
I even think maybe like whatever that can't overlap, they look like they're over, I don't know what's going on, it's like a Tetris puzzle.
Sugar Road. How hard, to be honest, is it for you to do a overlay of town that shows, these are the ten acre parcels?
No, that's what I've been working on.
Okay, awesome, awesome, awesome.
I already have, I can show it to you, I have a map, but I think I didn't include all of the ten acre parcels, so I want to go back. I want to go back to assessors and make sure I have everything.
What are you looking at? Ten versus fifteen, those two numbers?
You guys agree to ten, right?
Okay.
It'd be nice to know how many fifteen there are.
In an ideal world.
If it's too much work.
If it's like, oh, okay, I gotta do this again.
I'll, I'll see how much work it is.
Okay, the other quick, the last question I have is, the last question here, we were talking about, is going to be like a condo association or whatever? Because the roads, is there any chance that these roads ever become public roads, or no?
I don't think you can if it's going to be a condo.
I wouldn't make it a condo. I would, I would foresee this as a more clustered subdivision.
So it's, it's never going to be public roads?
No, the opposite. I would foresee this as public roads.
So that's not what it says then.
Where?
Well, you have attached units, there has to be.
It said, it says it's requiring a condo association pretty much, which means. Which part is that?
I mean, if it's, if it's single-family homes, yes, but if it's attached units, how can it not be a condo?
Somewhere in here, you say that. What number is it, Erica?
Ownership and speed. No, Erica is exactly right. If you're sharing a wall, you can't do it any other way. But if it's detached, you have a.
Oh, so you can, because you automatically, yeah, it's not like you're, it's not like you're on, it's not like in Century Mill where you have the wall on a public road.
Well, you are if they're all detached. But if they're saying here, you.
No, it's not.
None of these are all going to be able to, you're going to have, so the whole point of this is.
To make it work, they're going to have to.
Yeah, they just to, otherwise they'd be still on single families.
And, but do we put a simple carve-out that says you don't need to be a condo if you're detached? Or do you let the applicant come in and say, there's no reason for me to create a condo here? That's a town council question.
But, but also depending on what they do for law and subject, they may need, it may have the condo association, but maybe there is a homeowners association to maintain.
Is there a?
Is there a homeowners association in Century Mill? Because they should.
There has to be.
There is.
All right, so I think we can leave it then. It'll never be like, even if it's detached units, they're still not going to be on individual lots. You're going to be, you're going to be sharing land and facility, you know?
The way we're writing this, they could be on individual lots.
What's the incentive of making it a public road?
No intent, it's simply.
Because then the association doesn't have to.
It doesn't have to exist.
Maintain it, it's a decision to make.
Doesn't have to.
Are we just putting more burden on the town then?
Yeah, yeah. Everything puts more burden on the town.
I can imagine that, well, I don't know, yeah, I don't know.
The question is, what's the mix?
I just asked, but now that, well, now that I'm thinking about it though, I mean, most people will buy into these things, expect the condo fee and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we just leave it how it is.
I would leave it.
And let them come to us.
I, I don't see them coming to us necessarily with a detached.
Yeah.
I mean, everything about this is.
Yeah, health, health density.
But we're allowing detached, we call it out specifically. Should we not?
But, but everything the developers said is that it does, economically, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense, so I think it's fine.
But even if they are, it's not like they're all on their lot. It's detached units, but they're going to be like.
But if that's what we want to do, I wonder if we eliminate references to the option for detached units. We have those references in here now.
No, I think you still.
I think you still give, give a combination.
Just think of the detached units as attached, even though they're detached architecturally, it's still kind of attached.
Like, I know my country development has built, and it's lovely, it's really nice to have the combination.
But you're paying a fee.
We're all, the houses are paying, we're all paying a fee.
And you own the dirt, and you own the roads, and you guys have.
I own a percentage.
The toll.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you.
You own one hundredth of the.
Exactly, I think three percent or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you hire your own pavers, landscapers, snow removal. Boy, that'd even have more appeal to the town, right? I mean, there's no burden.
There's no burden, no.
Drainage, we don't have to maintain the drainage, we don't have to, yeah.
Then totally, I'm glad we had the conversation.
On, on, well, section six or credit roads, you're allowed to say that interior roads of any development will remain, will not be.
They call it out.
Call it specifically.
Say what?
They will never be town roads. Well, it's still, I mean, it sets the expectation very clearly right up front.
But we never anywhere in here talk about how a road should be designed.
Yes, we do, section six.
We do.
So we're.
But, but as much as we do in the subdivision?
Well, it calls up the regulations and saying, you guys can.
That's why I was originally confused, because we're asking for that, and then we're saying what you're always going to be.
Well, you need to have some standard for them to design the road again, so.
Yeah, they still need to design them and build it properly.
But if it is a cottage, could they design that more now, roads or?
Yes, and we kind of say that the planning board can modify as needed.
That's just the baseline.
Yeah.
Okay. We beat this one up enough.
All right, yeah, let's go.
I've got, I've got a couple.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, section E, background design criteria again. So we call out, section E, it's on page four.
Page four, okay.
Um, let's see, the, um, I didn't see no, or not have any dwelling unit extend under or over another dwelling unit in the same building. Is that, that prohibits any kind of garden-style?
Oh, I guess, yeah.
Units.
Is that what that is? I was wondering what that was.
It's a two-story.
I mean, that, I mean, do we want that?
Well, I wouldn't mind.
I wouldn't mind.
I, well, and first of all, I mean, if you're going to for over fifty-five, single floor has a lot of appeal.
Yes, absolutely, now, absolutely.
And if you need to, you know, and depending on, you know, to power your, you know, it may be that you want, you know, one here with the entrance on, on one side, and one on top of it with the entrance on the other side. So both walk in, they're both single floor, but that, that prevents it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah, because on one side, you're like this, and the other side like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to take it out?
I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
Well, Michelle, Michelle pointed to that as it being a weird clause.
Is that the one that you said there?
Well, I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm just looking, I mean, I mean, the way this, I mean, it's, it's, you're forcing either standalone or townhouses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think we should, I think we should give some flexibility, especially for hilly.
Yeah, exactly, even if it's flat and they just do a little ramp on one side, or, you know, sink, I mean, there's any, all sorts of things that they can do.
You get a single hill, we put the Stairmaster company in the business. Remember that?
Go ahead. Open space, section above it.
Yeah.
Um, just, you know, you talk about the value of, you know, wildlife habitat, but over septic system, it's going to be mowed. So there's not going to be any, any wildlife habitat there.
Butterflies?
Well, I think we, you know. But, but I mean, you know, but the, the wells are the only one that'll leave it undisturbed. No, we talk large blocks of undisturbed land, the only, the wells are the only one that'll be.
So you just don't like the description?
I mean, I think the description is a little bit.
Well, I think what the intent was to say that septic systems can be included within the.
Yes, yeah, but I think that kind of the.
What would you, how would you change it? What would you get rid of?
I, I would.
I mean, I think just, you know, to, you know, I think.
Maybe instead of maximize it, something like preserve. I, I mean, I, I like, I like the first sentence because it's getting at the intent. And then the second sentence is just saying, well, these additional things are allowed into it while they may not go towards the wildlife.
When you think about it, it's kind of, you know, kind of a little captured.
Yeah.
But I think, but the other part of it, I think, well, is, and I know on Century Mill, this was an issue with, with the open space where the, the well was in, the, the well in the zone one area were, were part of what they wanted to deem to, the trust or to the town for the open space. And there's a lot of going back and forth because, well.
That you need to maintain it.
You need to get it and maintain it, and so it's, you know, but it's, but it's deeded open space, and it's, you know, so I don't know. Did they carve that off and keep that as a homeowner's part, or what did they end up doing with?
I think it's still, it's still out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I'm, because any of these things, you know, the, the well's a septic, so our management system would not be something that, would be something we could look at, you know, they would look at, at deeding to anybody else, because those are required maintenance. And, so I think.
Well, they would have to be like an easement on the open space then.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, if you're the trust, you want somebody's, you know, somebody's septic system under the open space?
No, but I think that.
I mean, so, and, and I'm okay with, with that, but I think, you know, I mean, it's, if there's any intention that this open space will be deeded to anybody, none of those.
No, I think you're right, there needs to be an easement associated with it.
Either an easement or reduce this number to twenty-five, and say twenty-five percent and no.
I, I would rather, I would like to keep the thirty-three percent.
Yeah, I would too. I'm okay with, I'm just, you know, I mean, it guarantees that that open space will be retained, and I think we should just say it's going to be retained by the homeowners.
Yeah, why don't you just modify and say that then, we'll just take out that it can be offered to the town or any other nonprofit, we'll take that out, and it just.
So it'll be maintained by the homeowners, but open to the public?
No.
No, it's going to be their open space.
No, it's their open, yeah, it's, it's for their use.
Yeah, if it's owned by the homeowners, it's not open to the public.
I mean, I mean, if there's.
It's only open to the public if the town owns it.
If there's a section of land that does not have any, any improvements on it that they want to deed to the town, that's a separate thing.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, but, but if they're using that land for anything, I think it's, you know, the retained ownership of it. But I think, you know, but, but if they're using that land for anything, I think it's, you know, the retained ownership of it.
So we would just take out, or can be offered to the town? Is that, is that?
Probably, yeah. Well, could we, could we say, um, thirty-three percent open space, and it will be deeded to the town minus whatever infrastructure is built on, or something like that? Some kind of wording like that?
I don't know if we wanna.
I think we might need to do something like that, only because I'm thinking if it's a larger parcel in town that has.
Right, because we want the open space.
Significant or valuable forested area, well, like whatever. We're gonna get a lot of pushback because we don't have trails, or we don't have conservation areas.
So I think you say thirty-three open, uh, open space, but, uh, land without infrastructure will be deeded, or something like that. Land with infrastructure will remain homeowner open space?
Or, or, I mean, you could, or do an easement, I mean, I.
Yeah.
How do you do an easement over like a leach field, though? The whole thing?
Yeah, you would just, and you would actually have to do the easement from the leaching fields, from the septic line, all the way up to the haps, because they have access.
Plus some space to.
Well, and that would be the.
Yeah, and usually it's like a ten-foot wide easement.
So that would be the, the most efficient carve out is an easement. You know, instead of coming up, so we say, you know, be deeded to the open space minus easement for infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, maybe that's, that's an easier way to do it.
Yeah.
Um, so that way, if we're in a situation where.
That's the cleanest way to carve it out.
Yeah, because there's nothing wrong with just throwing some easements on over the utility stuff that needs to be maintained.
Yeah, I just know, I mean, a lot of the, I mean, there was discussion about, um, putting a, a leach field up on the, up on the common at one point, and that got a lot of flack, well, why does the town owner own somebody's leach field, and.
Well, yeah, so they don't want.
And it's ever damaged too, how do you, you know, well, is that because of something the town did, or something the owner did, or?
Well, so.
And it just, just became such a, a lot of discussions.
Is then, then an easement, would the town be liable for anything that happened on the easement portion?
Well, I think tech, I think technically it's their, but I'm just trying to think of like when you have a gas line, so you have a gas line that goes through, you know, a ton of things, and they have, you know, they don't own all the land.
No.
It's just, you know, but they have the right to go onto that land and to maintain their gas line. Um.
So it's either easement or deed everything that isn't included in the infrastructure?
Should we ask the, like, council on what's the best and more appropriate way to do that?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I mean, if, if, if a trench collapsed on a leach field.
Is that because of the town that started maintaining it? Was it poorly built? Was it, you know, was it?
It would be nice to separate it as much as possible.
I, I think.
Not have any gray area.
The bigger areas of open space is important, but I think you'd get an equal amount of flack if people started to say, we own their, you know.
Their septic system.
We own their septic system, we own their, their wells, we own their, you know.
Thirty-three percent open space, everything minus the infrastructure was deeded to whatever, and then the rest.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it to.
Yeah.
The town council.
I, I would, I think town council should weigh in on that, because you also have to realize, I mean, like a private well, I mean, they have a hundred-foot radius, you know, of protection, so is it the whole hundred foot? That, you know, we have.
Well, I think Century Mill, I believe.
Yeah, so I mean, I think there's some.
Century Mill, that's a, do they do one?
That's probably. Well, they did one.
They, they, one, one public water supply.
That's a public one, so that's an indoor well and protection area, so that's, that has another whole.
So the open space isn't in the restricted zone, or it is in the restricted zone of the well in Century Mill?
They have their well in the open space, and it's been, they've been going back and forth because the trust doesn't wanna own it, and now Andy's saying, you know, it, it's just, it hasn't been.
You can't need to carve it, and then that's why, that's why I brought it up, is I know that that's been such a, I mean, it's been an issue going on and on. The trust doesn't wanna own it because they don't know, if something happened to the water, they don't wanna be responsible for it in, in any way. And Andy wants to be able to say, yeah, I don't need all this land to the town, you know.
Well, I guess.
And, and there's a lot of paperwork now that has entire open spaces, one piece, instead of carving the, the, the well, the, the zone one part of the, of the well off is a separate piece, it's maintained by the homeowners association, and it's, it just.
Yeah, yeah, it's messy.
It, it can get really messy.
So talk to town council on however is the cleanest, best way to do it?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's out of our expertise.
I hope so.
I'm fully listening for it. Someone else of the town must be.
Right, yeah, for sure.
That was just.
Pitcher's help?
I was gonna say put a poll in, but I have the munchies, so.
We're doing that right now, if you want.
Yeah. Actually, how, is it gonna be a long one? Because I am really interested in that one.
Which one? We're just talking, we're targeting it.
No, 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 no. That was the next one.
We're doing it right now.
What do people think?
I think this. Do you have an extra copy to give them?
Um, he can have my copy.
All right. We're just talking about.
Yeah, I like calling out the existing bylaw, I think that's nicely helpful.
So we're trying to get a survey to town?
Limited business, business and industrial for the current, we did?
Well, we did, but because of all the other things.
There's offsets for children's poverty, and so does Angela, really.
Because Slater's has a, a living space that gets rid of, um, that gets rid of us, uh, the Skinner. So really, it just ends up being Paragon and Cobble.
Yeah.
Are the only two places that can actually match it out.
So that is kind of.
It's really just the industrial.
Yeah.
But when you add all your five hundred and all those setbacks, that's the only place it ends up.
So I have great news about this survey, and how we can get it out electronically. Now that we're doing this update to the website, there is gonna be an opportunity for us to do the survey electronically on our website now.
Oh, well, how about a survey section?
It's not a survey section, but it's like a fillable format form thing that we can do, and.
So just give a link to it?
We absolutely should be able to do this, hey, it's a electronic survey.
So that's just a draft, but that's the idea, the link, and then there's the QR code, if you wanna just do it on your phone, so. But I think there is that, you know, elderly population that will likely do the hard job.
Still do all the paper copy, no, that's.
Yeah, that's right.
So when, when is the intent to potentially have this go out?
I would like to send it out like before the next meeting, or maybe, right, you know, sometime in October.
How long can we leave it open for?
Um, I was gonna leave it open for a while.
Do we wanna have any kind of, uh?
I wouldn't.
Any kind of a characteristic, like, have you lived here for so many years, or?
Uh, that's up to you guys, how you want.
Like, just to, or do we just want?
Oh, you want just some of the.
Do we want demographics?
We can do it anonymously, or we don't have to, we can require.
I don't know, I don't, I just don't know how this is typically done. Do we, you know?
You can, you can ask a couple, you know, what's your, what's your age bracket, where, I mean, just a couple demographic questions, just to get an idea of who's answering.
Could those be optional?
Yeah, we can say optional.
Absolutely, it should be optional, and they should be ranges, you know, like.
I think you have to make it optional, because what's the point? Like, what are you trying to say?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, maybe we shouldn't have it, because.
It's prejudices, right?
I think, yeah.
The, the only thing is, I, I typically with surveys, like, I've done a fair amount of them, it is not good to give a long time for them to take the survey, no.
Okay, so what would you guys suggest?
I mean, typically, people will take a survey within the first two weeks, and if they don't take it within the first two weeks, they're not gonna take it. You could give maybe three weeks, if you want, just extend it a little bit longer, but not too long.
If that's the case, then maybe we'll send it out in November.
Yeah, I mean.
We'll do two weeks, so it has to be due before Thanksgiving.
One thing about, yeah, we don't need demographics.
I mean, I just, um, I've done a bunch of them, and they won't. If it's, if it's, especially if it's a.
Four?
Okay, if they're in a box for around two weeks, it's gone, they're not doing it.
Plus, yeah.
So usually people do it.
Jackass.
Within the first two weeks.
Why are you saying that?
And, uh, any, so this is gonna go out, how will we?
Well, I need to find out how much it's gonna cost. Um, I'd like to print enough so that we can include it in one of the editions of the.
Are you gonna hand, are you gonna hand enter these, or?
Just gonna hand.
What do you need handed?
I mean, if you send out physical copies.
Well, I imagine we're gonna get the majority electronically.
Yeah.
And then I'll get some data easily.
Computer friendly.
Um, I don't know how many, I don't know how many more copies we're gonna get, but yeah, I mean.
Hey, if we get a lot of responses, then that's a good thing.
That's better, yeah.
I mean, typically, your surveys are like, you know, maximum twenty percent.
Introduce yourself, sir.
Yeah, um, Brian Boyle, Samson Road. I just had a question for the, the answer options, it looks like it's either just yes or no.
Yeah.
Did you guys discuss trying to give like, so I, I'm just looking at these questions.
One to five, agree.
A lot of mine would be like, not sure, would want more information, something like that.
Well, you could do the strongly agree.
Yeah.
Sort of agree, neutral, one to five.
Or like, don't know enough, as one, yeah, something like that.
I don't, I don't know if you wanna have the range, I mean, I think these questions are, are dealing with yes or no, or I don't know type of thing, maybe you have the, the three options. Should the town?
I think you get more, I don't know, I tend to think you get more information with a binary question. And like, no comments, no, how do you really feel about this?
Well, you should have always at the very end a please add a special comment.
Yeah, yeah, I think that opens up.
I mean, you always wanna have it at the very end, so someone can just add another two cents if they want to, um. They don't make it.
So comment section, and maybe I should add my phone number in case someone has a question.
Brave choice.
About the survey, yeah.
About the survey. Or not.
That's your call.
Make sure it's this, this phone number.
So call my cell.
Yeah, you're right.
So questions five and six, they're kind of at the same thing, right? Because you say where medical marijuana is only allowed in the industrial zone.
Yeah, but we are, it's not technically just allowed in the industrial zone.
Right. It's not specifically called out.
Yeah, people are not gonna know that it's only allowed here.
I like that. It gets in.
All right, so we'll, so we'll change these to a one to five scale?
I wouldn't.
You would.
I would, I would not. I would, I would say yes and no. A free form.
Yes and no with comments, yeah.
I would say yes or no, or, or I would do a don't know, don't, like, or, or you can say no.
Yes, no, and don't know?
Yeah.
But don't care?
Yes or no.
Should the town allow this work? Or you could say no opinion.
Just do yes or no.
Yes, no, no opinion.
Yeah, that's.
Then you wouldn't circle it, and why are you taking a survey?
Let's just do a comment section at the bottom.
Because that's free form, you can do whatever you want. You can say, you know, I said yes for all this stuff, but I really have no info, you guys can hold it.
No, no, no.
Write whatever they want. And I, and that's, that's a good open form feedback. I don't know.
I think that's, this is good.
And then I don't know whether or not you wanna provide pictures of what these facilities potentially could look like.
At first I looked at that. Well, at first I looked at that, and I said, oh, come on, you are leading the witness, but, but, I don't know.
I was asking some people in Town Hall today that live in town, and they thought it was very helpful, like, I.
Well, I don't.
So what are their opinions of it?
I mean.
They didn't try anything, they wouldn't tell me their opinions, and they thought that was helpful.
Is this really what it looks like? I mean, what, when, when they came in to talk, they were talking about more of like, uh, industrial hard building.
Looks like a friggin' data center.
That's out of control.
Oh, this is the one in Free Town?
You have the free cameras?
Huh?
Blue.
Yeah, I know, I know.
No, I know what you're saying.
These top four look really idyllic.
I'll try and find a different.
Well, just put this one up at the top. I guess I'm leading the way. I don't, maybe we shouldn't have pictures, maybe we should have people.
I guess, why do we?
I wouldn't have pictures.
I, I can take it out.
I don't know.
If people want an electronic survey, I don't know how you would put them in anyway.
I think we should get rid of the pictures.
They said, Jen told me today that she thought they had a picture.
But can I ask, what is?
No, because, because this is a huge range, this is one of thousands, I mean.
It's one of two answers, to inform or to lead the witness, and I'm afraid it goes down the path.
But I guess, I guess.
The point was, I think, for the, when we talked about it, it was like, should they be allowed businesses that grow marijuana, and people might be like, oh, it's gonna be a cute little farm.
That's what we're worried about, yeah.
Or a little farm stand, where they're gonna sell pot.
Well, it could be, and so should we put a picture of a cute farm in it?
Could be this.
So you're talking a little waste room?
I, I mean, I think the bottom line, correct me if I'm wrong, is, I mean, it, it could be anything from the small farm to a huge thing, so providing the pictures isn't gonna do anything, because it really could be anything. Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
I think we should take the pictures out.
That's probably a good point.
People can go research.
Because I, I worry that exactly what you guys just indicated of leading the witnesses, what we're showing is a potential for, we're thinking it would be here.
I said yes, but it looks nothing like this.
Exactly. I don't wanna put us in that position.
I'd take the pictures out.
I mean, people can Google it.
Exactly, go do your own research.
And find them all over.
The World Wide Web has a lot of stuff on it.
And you're gonna do this a paper version as well?
But, but, I mean, like.
Yeah, I know, that's my intention, yeah.
I mean, do you also have to say, like, go to the library to take it, if they don't?
And if we put it, if we put the website and stuff like that, the Bolton Independent, a lot of people will be able to go online to do it. Um, but, yeah, go in the library, having some copies in the library.
I thought.
Well, I mean, just do it electronically in the library.
Contact, maybe you don't send any out paper, but it says, contact me, you know, if, your phone here, if you want a paper copy, and then we'll send you that.
People won't go to that effort. Um, I was thinking if they get it in their newspaper, they see it, they're like, oh, you know, this is interesting, I'm gonna take that.
I think you're right.
And if it's cheap enough, how much I do the prints, why not do it? Um.
Okay.
I'll find out from Bolton.
I have a question on the finances. Um, so you get three percent excise tax and three percent sales tax?
You could.
So that's six percent you can get per year?
I believe so.
That's what I read.
Yeah.
I always thought it was just.
You don't have to do them, but you could do them.
But that host agreement gets renegotiated every five years.
Are we sure about this, that three percent and three percent?
That's, that's what I read.
So they just updated, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, they, they went back and forth with those numbers quite a bit, so.
So I always just, I always just remember, remember hearing about a single three percent.
No, it changed in July, they amended it in July.
So the excise tax is what? It's, it's based on the assessment of the property? The three percent excise tax?
I don't know, excise tax. I, I can find out, I don't know.
Or is it just?
Or is that based on the sales, regardless of whether they're retail or, or wholesale?
I don't think so. Excise is a tax on an asset, not a tax on an income.
I mean, I can, I can understand the three percent of the, of the gross sales, I understand that, but I don't understand this excise tax number.
I, I think somewhere in there, I mean, you know, so is that, if it's just on the sales, just on the retail sales, then if you're hosting a grow or a manufacture, or, um, uh, or a test facility, you get no revenue from that. So I think somewhere, whether it's transferring from one facility, you know, somewhere in there, towns that are hosting, I mean.
Right, because if we just host a retail facility, then we get no benefit.
There'd be no sales. Right, you, you'd only get the benefit from the sales, so.
Maybe revise it and make it general.
What do you mean general?
At the state level, there are discussions about, uh, um.
I, I think, I think this is a law, right?
No, I mean, they, they've locked all that down, so I think we just need to make sure.
Why don't I talk to assessors, and I'll get their opinion on what that.
So I was just, I mean, I, like I said, I can understand the three percent gross sales, I just don't understand excise tax.
If you can't find definitive answers.
Oh, you won't include it.
Or if you find that it's.
I know it's three percent.
I think you can include it. I think it's key to include it.
I just wanna, I just wanna understand. Well, no, but if there is a quantified number, that's fine, I just don't understand.
I think it is, I think, I think we just, I mean, I mean, the original bill was ju- just talking about sales.
Yeah, right.
But then that original bill went to the legislature and they changed it.
And they changed, yeah, they changed it.
So if you can't find it definitively, I would say there is potential for rental tax revenue. Because that's a true statement.
I, I think it's been locked in, in.
The three percent is locked, I know for sure. It's, it's just, I just don't know.
We just don't know what the definition is.
Just add a little detail to it.
Okay, all right, so.
But the rest is good.
So no pictures?
No pictures.
I think no pictures.
I mean, you all agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's fine.
All right.
What's the background behind congregate? Background, I guess, what do we, what are we trying, it doesn't seem like a huge change, what are we trying to do? We don't recognize congregate at all?
This came about because of 401 Main Street, there was a lot of confusion regarding our definition for congregate living, because if you look to the State Zoning Act, Chapter forty-eight, Section three, congregate living is exempt. But here, in our local bylaw, we're saying congregate living is only allowed in the limited business district, which is not compliant with the State Zoning Act. You always would defer to the State Zoning Act, but, um, and if you look at the definition of congregate living, it actually isn't even the same And if you look at the definition of congregate living, it actually isn't even the same as what is referenced in the State Zoning Act. It's something completely different. So that's why I'm saying we need to update at least the title.
So this is just for...
This is just for 55 plus.
So...
So we have it in our code today as a special permit under limited business. We call it congregate. What we meant to say was senior, and now we need to clarify.
I honestly don't even know, and I'm thinking about reaching out to Dexter on what this even is.
No, we need more detail.
When I read the definition, I don't understand how this differs from assisted living. And we have assisted living as a separate use, so I...
See if he remembers.
I have no idea.
Absent that, we shouldn't be doing anything unless we know what we're doing.
Well, I think it's either we modify it or we take it out. It's one of those two things.
If it doesn't make sense to us...
Yeah.
Did they try to use that at 401?
Oh, yeah, I tried to explain to the ZBA that we have to go by the State Zoning Act, and they disagreed, and they...
Oh, basically, what if that...
Yeah.
Yeah, so definitely should be cleaned up, let's understand.
Yeah.
Rate of development by law, this is something that we used to have, but it expired?
Exactly. It expired in 2008. So it only allowed for 37 building permits for new buildings to be issued on a yearly basis. So just to kind of give you some background, I did some researching on how many building permits we had issued over the last 15 years or so for new buildings. And I thought it was really interesting, because really, I think, I think it was pretty hot in the late 90s.
Clearly.
And then, and then it really, you know, kind of died down, and we haven't even really reached that 37. I think it was one year where we had 38 in 2010. But other than that, so it was just to give you some context, whether or not this, you know, is something that we need at this point, or maybe we'll wait a few years and see if it starts to go up again.
I guess building, so building permits or occupancy?
Building permits.
Building, yeah, it's for new buildings.
Because we have 11, 11 on Florish, 4 on 649, which is 15, and 18 on Hudson. So that's already 33. And, and what about Cottage Overlay now?
Would that be one part?
But this is per year, so we're September.
So, I mean, those aren't gonna all be pulled in the same year.
Right.
If it was cottage, it would be.
If it was cottage, it would be, but, but like, you know, Hudson, Hudson... I mean, they don't pull all...
How many?
Is that building or is that dwelling?
Yeah, now cottage, what would that be? Would that be the cluster?
Is that dwelling?
Well, Sugar Road, or, excuse me, even the cottage might not be all in one year, because they would phase it. So like the Sugar Road project, you know, they...
Is there a concern? Why are we, I wonder why we're talking about it? Are we concerned?
I don't think we're concerned.
I don't think so either, but it was on the list, so I wanted to just sort of...
I would say that's a whole lot.
I think based on these numbers, I think we're good.
I'd say more.
Yeah.
But you know what? It's, it's, if we can, you can continue to fill out, check it. I agree. I think that this is great to look at, and for us to kind of check ourselves and see how we're doing.
So, but was the 37 binding in some way? I mean, if we issue 38, what is the number?
So Plaine Board had an option of issuing a current, a special permit to a developer who, for some reason, needed to expedite his building permits. They could issue another 10 to that developer.
Okay.
So there was that clause.
Okay.
Agriculture and farming are yours, right?
Well, now, this is in relation to cultivate.
Yeah.
So when we were talking about agricultural businesses...
So I just gave an example, I just gave an example of care farms, but the board could, you know, obviously add whatever other uses they felt were applicable.
So the agricultural business use, I think this was put into place for J's, right? Pretty much?
Yeah, for initial, but binary.
So it's to have kind of an accessory business?
Yeah.
Do you think that gets voted through a town meeting?
Yes, I think it will.
Okay, good luck. One neighborhood will not need it.
We need to figure out where the space that and just the other amendments.
What do you mean?
If it's controversial.
Away from all those things where people calm down first, no.
Towards the end, towards the end?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I actually think this is really important, because I think you want...
I do too.
Please, this is that for, like, the care farms, to go through a permitting process where people can chime in and be happy about it versus what happened with 401.
Yeah. Well, and also, I think, do we want a farm to have an innovative business use and stay a farm? Or do we want it to become a subdivision?
Right.
No, yeah, we want to be able to allow them to have a subdivision.
So we want people, I, I know at the ZBA hearing, I forget, it was, what's his name? Bob, I don't know. He came up with the, do we want, do we, yeah, no, not Fox, yes, Roma.
Roma.
He came up with an example of, you know, some, some farm could, you know, or some house, some house could call himself, grow basil and call himself a basil farm and then have a, you know, a restaurant based around basil. I'm like, that sounds awesome. But he was just... I was like, that sounds awesome, somebody should do that. So any way that we can turn, well, what they're worried about is, like, residential places being... But, but no, but this is only, this is five acres, though.
So that's the other limitation I'm suggesting, is going from 20 to 5, so that we can capture more of these...
10 acre lots, if they're a farm and they want to put a restaurant on it?
Yeah, I think, I think 20 is really large.
I think, and you're including a lot of... Five acres goes back to the state, well...
How?
Yeah, I'd say 5, 40.
It's seven acres.
There's 7, it's on there.
So, so five, I, no, I agree, I think 5 is fine. I think that's appropriate.
So, and this, this kind of covers restaurants, you know, because we would like a 10 acre lot to have a farm and restaurant.
We don't call it restaurants, if we want restaurants, it has to be clarified as one of the uses.
But you have here food...
Retail sales or farm products?
But retail sale of farm products is not a restaurant.
It's not a restaurant.
That's a farm stand.
Certainly, they can argue.
That's a farm stand.
How does, how does, how does J's, then what are, how do they fall into this?
That's a good question. Oh, you're right, I guess it is under that, because in other prepared foods on the premises.
In other prepared foods.
Yeah, okay, so I guess...
So that is restaurants.
In other prepared foods, okay, alright, so that, yeah.
I mean, if I was writing it, I'm gonna call that a restaurant.
Yeah, it might be a little clearer.
Right?
No, although, yeah, I think this is fine.
The sale of prepared foods.
Yep, including serving consumption of baked goods and other prepared food, I'm okay.
Yeah, I guess the question on all of this is, we already have a table of accessory uses in general. Do we add basically, you know, do you kind of...
It's there generically.
It's there, yeah.
Like, I think it's ag business, and then it says special permit by order select, so it does capture this.
Okay.
And this is where you, this is where you define what an ag business is?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, the tough thing here is that you've got prohibited uses, and then anything else has to go back to, to the list of allowed uses. Not that it's by special permit or anything. I would actually like, if we could think of another use or two to add to this?
Yeah.
Just so it's not, so it's not a single direct, so what, like, what can we add to this? You know, what businesses, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question is, do we take out the...
Oh.
Well, or allowable accessory uses are the following, so maybe examples of allowed uses are the following.
Hmm, that's a good idea.
And then we have the prohibited uses, and then basically section, the, the catchall, that's anything else is by special permit. Well, it's all by allowed uses.
Example, examples of allowed uses.
Yeah, and then prohibited uses are clear, but it's all we, and I'm not even sure that we need the, the catchall, you know, subsection B there. That it must meet the requirements of, of...
Where you, what be?
So, okay, so there's... That one, and all other uses. There's one, two, yeah, all other, all other uses must meet the requirements of subsection E1. I think if we take that out, and say that a lot of, you know, that it's by special permit, example uses are... Oh, you want, sorry, go here. So, right here, this section here.
Oh, here it is, oh, okay.
So if you're saying the allowable things are here, prohibited things are here, and then anything else has to adhere to what you've already said, the all-allowed uses, it's kind of a weird...
Yeah, I mean, I think you're right, maybe it's examples are here, we have prohibited, it's fine.
And we don't, we don't need the catchall word there, but it's, but it's, you know, it's by special permit anyway.
Yeah.
So then we don't, and then we don't need to necessarily call out...
Basically, anything outside of a prohibited use is by special permit.
Yeah.
That's fine.
But you say that, or you're saying we don't even need to say that?
You don't need to say it, because you're, if you, once you get rid of that B, sentence...
And, and you say, instead of this being just the list of all uses, you need examples?
Yeah, you gotta clearly say examples.
Yeah.
So then that's, that means the criteria section becomes really important, because...
Yes, yes, because that's how the board is gonna determine whether or not prohibited use, yes, is allowed.
So one thing under criteria, D, I think when we start looking at farm being five acres, it's gonna be really hard for a farm to meet that criteria.
Total annual projected sales from the accessory use when fully operational do not exceed total sales derived from...
Well, yeah, so I don't like that at all, because, you know, I don't mind if the accessory uses...
Well, is it an accessory if it's...
I know, but then, then that gets back to the whole definition of accessory, now it's, is that becoming a prime use? But I guess then you could also go back to...
Well, that's the whole argument with 401.
Yeah, but then you could go back to, it's an accessory use of the land, maybe, because the land can be large and farmed and all that other type of stuff.
I think it's more to do with the square footage than...
Yeah, so in that retrospect, I would say, then take this out, because then it's okay, the, the sales are greater than...
But then how does that impact the larger properties? Do we want a Kimball's farm, or Davis farm, whatever, the one that has all the...
Davis farmland or...
Yeah, we want that in behind, but...
Or, I mean, Kimball Farm has the same, and, and not the one in Lancaster, but in, I work right next to the...
Oh, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not even half a mile from there, so, and that thing just keeps exploding, getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
Yeah. I'm waiting for them to that Lancaster, too.
So, so, so speaking of, the thing that, you know, so this is not like farm zone, and it's residential zone, so people are gonna be concerned that businesses will creep into the residential zone. You know, so, we have to be careful here.
So that would prohibit some of that from, if we kept that in, if we kept D in?
With D, yeah.
Um...
Would that stop 401?
Yeah, it would.
Right?
Yeah. Because the total annual projected sales from accessory use...
Can't be more than the... Yeah.
Well, the whole argument with 401 is that they were saying they're not an accessory business, they are agriculture.
They're one and the same. Actually, I think B might even restrict to Kimball's or on Davis Farm.
Use of reason related to that.
So actually, this, that's what I meant to say, I've been so far with this 401 that I kind of forgot. We have to put an intertwined clause here, that if, if the accessory business is wholly intertwined with the, you know, if it's intertwined with...
The main use.
With the main use, then, you know, this, this sales thing doesn't apply. Some wording like that. Because in 401, that would be...
Well, I think if it, if they're intertwined like that, I mean, essentially, they really should be going for the exemption. They're really agriculture.
Yeah, then it's not an accessory use.
The whole point of this is to allow for business accessory.
Mm-hmm. And that's what 401 was doing, right? They were going for the exemption, because they were agriculture. They weren't, they were never even saying they were accessory. They were saying, we're agriculture. Just a side note, what's going on with that? They're suing us, right?
It's still being, yeah, it's still being litigated, so more than likely, the ZBA will come to a compromise and allow them to operate under certain conditions. That's, we're probably, just to save money, not go through the entire process, that's probably...
Right. Not, not make them, not, not make them be a home occupation, but give them some, some place in the middle.
So people are going to...
And that's the other thing, I think I have to have town council weigh in, depending on that outcome, maybe care farms won't even be able to be in this category, because then moving forward, care farms will be an exemption use. I don't know.
For agriculture.
Or maybe each care farm has to be reviewed individually, I don't, I don't know, but I think town council...
I do like moving the 20 to 5, so definitely keep that.
I think D, I almost wanna say...
Actually, we should probably just take it out, because if we now leave it open, saying that, you know, allowable accessories may include but not limited to, and then just give the examples that were there originally and not include the care farm? Then it's really like the board is elect, we need to decide whether a care farm or not.
I mean, I still think it's, it's a nice example to put in there. I just think there's, there's, D's question, maybe we want to think about this a little bit more, about whether we want to take this out or keep it.
Next question is, what do we, what do we want? You know, do we want there to be a five acre lot to just have a, a restaurant and just, you know, like a little pot on the side that, you know, with some basil that they call it? That they call a farm, or actually have a kind of functioning...
So what, so what properties can we think of that potentially this, if we kept this in, that it would hurt or negate or not allow?
I mean, like, how many acres is Schardner, these twits?
Okay, Marjorie. I don't know.
I don't even, I don't even know anymore.
Well, let's, let's, I mean, it's almost 10, so we should...
Yeah.
I think in every five acres, you're gonna have their own cell tower.
Um, you know what? That's a really good point, yeah.
Let's, yeah, I can't, I can't think about it right now.
Yeah, I think this one needs to be taken, compared.
Yeah. There's a lot of side effects to that.
So parking, what's the idea? We looked at what our bylaw allows for in different uses. We looked at some examples that we have in towns, how many spaces do you require with our current code? And if we adopted other towns instead, what kind of relief we would get? So the intent is to, what, require less spaces than we currently require to...
I think so, yeah.
Help the development of some businesses and also reduce impervious areas.
Well, just make it, make it a more dynamic bylaw, whereas if you have a small property and you're not requiring all this, you're not hindering a business by requiring so much parking, you know? Just make it a smarter bylaw.
And looking at the examples you provided, Mass Smart and Stow seem to be pretty aggressive.
I mean, in general, having, having a client number of square feet of parking that we want and not the number of spaces is kind of, um, to start with.
Yeah, three square feet of parking, yeah.
Three square feet of parking is a bizarre application.
Yeah.
I have a lot of zoning reviews.
Yeah, I want one space per...
Whatever square footage.
Yes, so what I, what I recommend is we just develop a parking schedule, just like all the other towns do.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's so much more...
This is gonna be the cleanest.
I think that makes sense.
So I can do that for the next meeting, if it's something you guys want to...
So just think about the Cracker Barrel, how much square footage is that? It's like a thousand, or a little less?
No, it's more than a thousand.
Huh?
That's more than, are you talking about the square footage of that interior?
Yeah.
It's more, I think it's more than...
It's like 2,400 or something, right?
Maybe closer to 3, you get some apartments...
So say 3.
Well, no, we're just talking about, like, the store.
The retail.
The retail.
Probably 2, right?
I think it's less than 2.
Okay.
So like somewhere between 1,000 and 2, maybe 1,000.
So, I don't know. Say it's 1,000. So right now, that would require 3,000 square feet of parking. What's a parking spot, standard size?
Nine by 18.
Nine by 18, 180...
I do...
Or 171?
Are you kidding me? I do say, this is what I do. And the aisle width is 24 feet.
So what's 3,000 divided by 171?
I have no idea.
About 18.
About 18? That's a lot of parking.
Would you say 3,000?
This is 10.
Divided by what?
171.
Probably closer to 8.
Nice.
17 and 1/2, okay.
There you go.
So that means that the little Cracker Barrel, under our bylaw, would require 18...
17, 18.
No, you're always gonna round up, I've been 17 and 1/2, you're rounding 18.
That's what I'm saying, that's ridiculous.
So Stow is something like, half of that.
So, so says retail, one space.
5, 10, 8.
Well, the Cracker Barrel's technically business, so it'd be one square foot, per square foot of space.
Huh?
It's business, it's not retail.
Currently.
Well, no, currently, but, but they want to make it retail.
Okay, well...
Yeah, yeah. And that's the, the big, you know, they want, before the ZBA to get a variance, but they, you know...
So 18, 17 or 1800 square feet downstairs, going retail, under Stow's, requires something like 7 or 8.
Which makes much more sense.
Which is about half, yeah.
They either have...
And that's what they have.
Yeah. I like Stow, but...
So that's, that's, that was my point, you know?
I mean, I will say, most towns, as Erica just pointed out, they have a parking schedule.
Okay, yeah.
And that's pretty typical, because of your different uses, so, is this a sample of Stow?
That's just an example, so what I'll probably do is take our schedule for many uses, and then literally just make it a parking table and use all these references to come up with what the requirement should be.
I, I think that's, sounds like the best idea.
So is this something you guys want to move forward for town meeting?
Yeah, yeah, it should be, I mean, it's, it's better, right? It's less impervious.
It's better for both.
Yeah, it's better for the businesses, it's better for the town. I don't understand, like.
It makes sense.
You may, you may get some businesses that say, I wanna do more parking spaces, but there's no people who are happy to do more. This is the minimum.
This is the minimum.
So.
We have the minimum of this and then the maximum of.
I mean, this is like an old standard of let's just pay as many, you know, like a Walmart, you know, they want like. And then you go to those parking lots and have them around you all the time.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying, it doesn't make sense.
And then you can't give enough to.
Yeah.
I mean, really, the only reason why I see it being there is to limit business, you know, it kind of hinders it.
Yeah, and that's.
Okay.
A mend inclusionary housing, did we do that last year?
Yeah, we talked about doing a density bonus, but I think now it's a cottage overlay.
Okay.
We probably don't need it, I think we can cross that one out.
All right, excellent.
You know how I feel about adult uses.
Adult use by law is a question.
We don't wanna be. Rogue don't fit.
Wait, what is it?
We have no protection during zoning, the adult usage.
We can't get affordable housing here, you think we're getting adult uses in there? I don't.
No, we're not saying Florida, we're saying put a ban on it.
No, I know, I mean.
But, well, restrict, restrict where it can go.
Restrict where it can go.
I say we got enough on the plate, let's pass it.
Yeah, I always say.
Pass it to you.
I think that's the answer for the last four.
Well, when it becomes an issue, I think we'll have to deal with it.
It'll be too late.
It's never gonna become an issue.
I know, I can't see anyone coming.
Short-term rental was an issue, then it wasn't an issue, and it will be an issue someday.
That's one I think, this is with Airbnb, right, so.
Well, it is short-term rental is still an issue.
Yeah.
What, what happened with renting out the whole house isn't an issue anymore, but.
But there's something, because if they're doing under five, they can still rent out their house. There's just now more of a description of what can be allowed from our building inspector, but, so if you're, if you went out to five people, Airbnb, you're allowed to do that.
Yeah.
What we're not taking advantage of is any tax benefits or any of that type of stuff. And a bunch of the cities and towns and mass are now doing that. So it's something we may wanna consider. I don't know if we can do it for this year, I mean.
I don't think we can.
Yeah, it's a lot, but.
I think that the fear from those who didn't want it has been alleviated with the ruling that we went through. The fear from those who do want it because they wanna think creatively about tax revenue.
Yeah.
It is an issue and it will continue to be an issue.
But it's still, it's not like we're a hotbed for this, so there's no like pressing need to do it right now, I don't think.
Yeah, I, I could go, I mean, I think it's, it's something we, we should keep on the list and it's something we should address maybe over the next two years, but.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know if it has to be this year, but I just think that, you know, I, I see it as it could potentially happen more and more, especially with like weddings at the international or like in other things, or, you know, people just wanting a couple of weeks here or something like that.
Well, so the other thing with this, it's not listed here. If we wanna say that hotel or bed and breakfast is allowed by special permit in the residential zone, do we wanna do that, you know? Because then that would.
It's a different way to do it, totally.
Then, then, then that house, then that house that we had it.
Yeah.
Could get a special permit.
Could get a special permit and become a hotel or a bed and breakfast or whatever.
But I don't know if we necessarily wanna go to that line because the Airbnb allows them to just do it for like three months and then not do it, you know, I mean, it gives the owner much more flexibility to do it whenever they want.
But then also if we do make, allow them to become, then we can tax them.
Well, we still can tax them with Airbnb, we just need to come up with a bylaw.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's what Cambridge and Concord and a couple of those other towns were putting together. Because there was, I mean, clearly, as you get close to the city, it's happening all the way. So maybe we just table it for this year, but we maybe keep it as a discussion point to.
Where is 711, 713, and 716?
So, 716, 718 is Cracker Barrel, 711, 713 is the TruWright's property, the property next to it.
What is it now?
So right now, it's pre-existing non-conforming, well, it's residential in the residential zone, but it's pre-existing non-conforming business. Cracker Barrel is pre-existing non-conforming office space. So that current owner wants to, is exploring it, becoming a general store.
And they can't do it.
They can't do it.
They keep it as an office or go back to resident, that's it.
That's it.
Then I think we should.
So they go, but they're going to ZVA to ask for a variance to the.
So it might be moved, but they might need.
No, but still, those two properties, I, I mean, for the past hundred years have always been businesses. I think if you give them unlimited business, the property becomes a lot more valuable and, and, you know, has.
So center of town, we just invested in common.
Yeah.
No, we're even here.
I mean, I think, and I don't see.
So it's just an amendment to the map?
Yeah.
That's fine.
It might be controversial just for the fact that neither property have very much parking. I can see people being like, no, that's just gonna be a traffic nightmare, let's not do that. I can see that being, actually.
Well, but we have the parking by law.
But no matter what we would do with that parking by law, 711, 713 will never have enough parking.
Yeah, they'd have to park.
And we can't, we can't do just the Cracker Barrel, right? The spot solely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we should still do it. It's the center of town.
And see if we can do it.
They are ugly properties that are not being used.
Well, and they could be. And the owner of 711 through 713, I mean, he's kind of just sitting on it. He got the antique store, which is good, but.
Well, we might wanna do that when we do the parking, is to allow for off-street parking to count towards their parking count. Something like that, allowing that.
But also that 711 through 713 means has the contempt barn, which you can take down and.
But their flatlands are right there, there's no way that they're gonna be able to do it anymore.
Correct, it is a tough site, but to try and give them some love so we can try and redo that from a condemned eyesore.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that would be the perfect location for a general store.
That was a general store across the street forever.
Yeah, I mean, you're probably, that's probably where you.
Still here, I was buying my soap there.
All right, so we'll move that forward, I guess.
What's the lot, Cambridge, is that one of yours?
Yeah, so that's, so right now we're 8% coverage.
Yeah.
Meaning, you know, no other, your floor space can only be 8% of the lot. And so, you know, we're never gonna get more business-owned land. We have to make better use of the land we have. So if you go to say 12%, you increase your potential intake from that property by 50%, you know?
So that means all existing commercial properties could then expand to meet the 12% as well.
Yeah.
What can, what was the intent, do we know, behind the original 8%?
Just to limit.
Just to limit the size.
Of course, your magic didn't come out of your.
Yeah.
What does the overlay go to?
It's 10%, which is.
That's right.
Which is why nobody's taking financial.
Well, in, in town.
I thought they said they need like 20 or 30%.
Well, so the thing with the overlay is to, in order to get some rows of townhouses and then the business, they said to really make it work financially and with the subject issue, it needs to be like 30%. You know, or it's not even gonna try.
So what, why are we going from eight to 12 then?
Well, I was just talking about, that's not the overlay, it's just.
It's just commercial.
Just commercial.
All right.
So like the cane property, for instance, can go from 8% coverage to 12% and that would probably.
Allow some businesses to expand.
Yeah.
And give them some opportunity to grow here and not leave.
And then the other one is industrial is 8% as well, but like Cobham is already covering 15%.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Because it's grand, right?
It must probably have.
I think industrial should be like 20%. And the reason why I think it should be higher is because then we can offer TIFs because Cobham's gonna be going up for sale and pretty much with the traffic issues, I think it's gonna be a really hard sell, but if you had the advantage to build out more. So a TIF is that you, you wouldn't buy this and expand but for this TIF. So the town could give like a five, you know what it is? The town could give like a five-year agreement saying no taxes for five years. If you build more than in five years, we'll have more tax revenue. So I think, I think industrial should go up. I'm not sure what the number is, but it should go up. We should go up from 8% for sure, you know? We need, we need, we need more tax revenue.
What are you doing, looking at other towns?
Well, can we?
Whatever you guys want, I can, if you want me to. I didn't know they were moving this forward, I didn't really wanna do too much work on it until.
I'd be interested to know what the other towns have for lot coverage for.
I have certain developments that you guys like the look of that I can research, figure out what their lot coverage is. Or you can think, you can think about it too, if there's.
Yeah, Stowe's probably a huge number. What's Stowe's Plaza that's.
Stowe's gotta be a lot more, I mean, they could allow a lot more than.
Stowe and Harvard.
Yeah.
Harvard's kind of a.
Harvard doesn't have any retail.
Oh, yeah, they do, Route 2. There's a bunch of decent-sized stuff, not huge, but decent-sized.
That's all Route 2.
Yeah. What else, is that it? That might be it.
Yeah, they got, they got like that pizza.
There's a business condo.
What's, what's the pizza place that Plaza?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Up and down that road, once you get north of two.
Correct, yeah, that's one of them.
Foxborough.
Foxborough would be good to look at.
I can just move on to the surrounding.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think you're gonna find, like, in, in certain towns, these percentages are gonna be a lot higher, but.
Sure. I just don't feel like, I think you will find that. I think those towns have similar values and character as ours do. They're just benefiting from a substantial tax base, which would be kind of cool to do. Harvard is not different from us, nor is Stowe. But they've got a couple of things going on.
Well, Stowe has a lot more retail than we do. I mean, they, they definitely do.
I think they have a lot less than they do.
I think.
But I mean, it's a perfectly functioning town.
But I thought Harvard had a lot less than we did.
No, Harvard is different because they, they, they only have a lot.
Well, you could.
It feels like.
I think the only other person I thought was us was Harvard.
Harvard's the.
Well, Harvard, Harvard gets, they get debit money.
Okay.
Actually, probably doesn't have less than we do.
I just think, I think, I mean, I don't know that you'd really be able to tell the difference between 8% coverage or 12% coverage, but if we can increase our tax revenue by 50% businesses.
I don't know if that would.
If everyone expanded, then in theory, you would. If you got no new.
But I think, but I think we gotta be careful of going to a number that's really not gonna make it worth it. I mean, if it makes sense to go to 20%, then we should go to 20%.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I think.
Have the fight once when it's the right number.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's not just bump it up to.
I agree, I mean, I was just saying that just to not scare people.
Yeah, well.
But, but if.
But maybe we need to, maybe we need to educate them.
Yeah, but, but. Well, I want stuff to pass too.
Right, but, but the people that are complaining about the, you know, what their tax bill is, you know.
This is a way to offset.
This is a way to offset it, this is, you know.
Yeah, without changing the zoning of the land. You've already got a business there.
And I heard, I heard the argument, I think it was at the debate, where somebody said something like, oh, well, you'll need so much more resident, you know, if you want 50% more taxes, you'll, what 50% more residential lots will you make limited business? You don't have to do that, just allow the business zones we have to expand.
To expand, yeah.
And it's become relevant, where Cobham today is entirely irrelevant.
Yeah.
Do some things to make that turn back.
Since we're looking at that, do you also wanna look at property offsets? Because our front yard offset for businesses is crazy, it's like 150.
Yeah.
So it really pushes parking forward, which I don't think we want.
No, we like parking behind the building.
Yeah, so I think if we're gonna be modifying that, we should be also, it's all sort of one thing.
And we're doing the parking anyways, so.
I think we should be looking at the offsets.
That sounds good. We're gonna wrap up the cottage if we're gonna get into some of these other ones, which would be fine.
I think that will be a relatively easy one once we do the research.
Okay.
All right, men's sign by law?
I didn't think this was an issue, but I don't think.
And he's bringing it to my attention.
But, 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 I don't, I, I personally don't think doing something like what she's proposing is a terrible thing. I would do two things, temporary.
Without adult four has to be removed.
I don't really care when they're erected, so that, that first part of the middle, I would get rid of.
Yeah.
In terms of removing them seven or 10 days, whatever the number is, I think she's on to something. I would keep that in there.
Do you go?
I would get rid of the middle of that first paragraph.
They may be erected or maintained for a period of 30 prior. Forty-five, sixty days prior to the date of the election.
But I would keep in, get them out there when the elections.
I, I sent an email to Pam asking, what's the time from caucus to election day?
It's like two months typically.
I don't think the genesis of this was.
No, 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 but I, but I think whatever, I mean, we don't want somebody putting up, you know, Trump 2020 today.
Why not? It's their private property.
It's their private, well, I mean, I mean, it's like any other sign that we regulate.
Yeah, I don't. I don't see something that's like four years ahead of time.
Country coverage, private property, but we regulate our signs.
That's a business.
Still private property.
Okay.
I mean, a business is a person, right?
If I wanna put a paper sign on my residence, I think I should be able to do it.
Well, technically, you should be able to put whatever you want up there, so this is.
Yeah, if it's a residence, yes. Now, if it's town property, okay, not cool. Do they need to be cleaned up?
In businesses, I would say I would wanna, like, I don't think that they should be.
I mean, why not?
Well, if, if a business owner wants to, yeah, I mean, if, if, you know, Frank Patterson wants to put up a sign for, you know, supporting somebody, you know, he should be able to do it. You know, it may or may not affect his business either way, but, you know, that's.
The tip, I mean, when I read this, I was thinking, is this really, I've never deemed this, the only, only time I've ever heard anybody complain about a political sign is somebody not liking a particular candidate.
Correct.
You know, so, so I, I've never heard of signs being up too early, or signs lingering for time after and number signs, I, I think we should not touch this personally.
I, I, I think, I think going up too early, I don't think is an issue. I think I have seen signs lingering out there for weeks and weeks and, and I know that there are some, you know, occasionally there's issues with people putting them on town land.
The town land, I watched it before, the public property.
That's the only one I would.
They're taking it down from a, like a littering standpoint, like people don't care about them anymore and they get all, no one throws them away.
Signs may be only, only be posted on private property because none of the owner tenant, so that's fine. No signs may be placed on public property, I mean, that's straightforward. The town may remove signs on public property and will retain them at the transfer station, which temp is, that's fine.
But is there an issue with them, on your side now? Is there an issue with them on public property? Have there been many of them?
Yes.
I'm told from Paul's.
Okay, yeah. So that's one type of essential.
No, like the, the. Well, that was talking about.
I don't know, I just, I'd rather not touch this. I feel like it's getting into kind of like a.
How, I guess.
I don't, I don't really want that.
I don't think it's, I think, I think, I mean, I think taking.
Well, bottom, bottom line is if someone's put on public property, we have the right to take it down. The town has the right to remove it. We don't need this to remove it.
Right, if that's.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I mean, there's, there's nothing to say that they, you know, you're putting something in public property, you can't, you're not allowed to do that, so. And if you're putting it on private property, like you said, so everyone has their right and they certainly shouldn't be limited to, now I'm kinda going the other way. They certainly shouldn't be limited to just one, they could put five in a row or whatever. I mean, it's their problem.
I don't wanna touch this personally.
This is not gonna.
Yeah, who's gonna get up and defend this?
I'm, I'm not presenting this.
Well, I would just say a response is, you know, if it's public property, there's schools that govern that.
We have bigger issues, we have much bigger issues to attack from that. Sorry, Pam.
I will not do me a turn.
Second.
I'll lose the paper say.
Bye.
I, I suppose.